Our city council study session. I'll note for the record that all of our council are present. Item one on this agenda is to review the agenda we have for our Monday, April 3 meeting. So council, please refer to that document. Leading off, anyone have a question regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Schumers has a question about item seven, is that right?
I don't have a question.
Mr. Brady has a comment. Oh, okay.
And Mary can help me out. The applicant for item seven, and that would include A, B, and C, is asked for continuation, and the date we're going to set is May 1st. So that will be, item seven, A, B, C will be continued to May 1st.
Okay, thank you. Council, any other questions regarding Monday's agenda? Mr. Brady, anything staff would like to update us on, on anything on that agenda?
Um, nothing in particular.
Okay. All right, well, we've got plenty of other things to do.
Yeah, I was gonna say, lots of other things to talk about.
Yes. Okay. There's my, I'm sorry, I'm just now discovering the agendas from my right side.
Mayor, while you're here, maybe we should go to that, yeah, 2A for sure.
2A, okay. So just to set the stage for today, this morning, Arizona Brain Food is celebrating its 1 millionth backpack, and we're cutting the ribbon on a new facility there, and it has to be done on Thursday morning because these kids take those backpacks home for the weekend, so they can't schedule around us. So I am going to depart for a moment at 8:15 to go enjoy, be a part of that celebration, and then I will be back here. I probably estimate I'll be gone for about 30 minutes at the most. So, so I apologize, at 8:15, I'm going to get up and walk out, and the vice mayor will continue the meeting. So having said that, Mr. Brady.
Well, maybe, then maybe, shall we wait for you to come back on 2A, or this is the follow-up from last week?
Yeah, thank you, I absolutely am looking forward to that.
Because I know you, well, then, let us, if, maybe we should, if you have to leave in less than 15 minutes, why don't we?
Should we go to 2B?
Bush that one down and go to 2B.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm excited to hear this one, too. Item 2B is a presentation and to discuss the project update for the Post and Neon Gardens. Well, I agree, everyone should be at Brain Food, I wish we could, yeah. Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Andrea Moore, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Facilities, and with me today is Luis Ruiz, our Deputy Director over Commercial Facilities. Oh, I see, still on the other slideshow, sorry. All right, so we are presenting an update to you this morning regarding the Post, formerly known as the Federal Building, at Pepper and McDonald, and also presenting the concepts that we're working on for the area to the west of the building called the Neon Garden. So we're getting very close to completing construction on the building itself as an event venue and an office space, and then starting to look at what comes next as next phase of construction for that site. So as a reminder, the Federal Building used to be the post office for the city, and in 2002, the National Park Service deeded that over to the city of Mesa as an excess property with some restrictions on it, that it had to be used for a public purpose, it must be open to the public, and that the city was required to be the manager of the site for any activities that happened there. The building is historic, the north half of it was built in 1936, the south half was added on in 1959, and it's about 22,000 square feet altogether. Now, let Luis talk about what's going on inside the building now.
Okay, so the slide before you, council and mayor, depicts pre-construction and construction, our final design. One of the features, bottom right-hand, is the addition of an elevator, public access to the office spaces, et cetera, and the remaining, the remainder of the project has been interior and site construction and upgrades. So right now, where we are in the timeline, substantial completion is currently scheduled, expected to be late May of this year, with final completion, a few outstanding items that will remain would arrive sometime in June, so we're hoping to open a soft opening for city events beginning in July. We have ordered, and we will be ordering FFNE, it's been identified event, for event furniture, office furniture, as well as kitchen equipment, and that'll take a little bit of time for it to arrive due to lead times which keep increasing, but we hope to get approval to move forward that in mid-April, and start planning and booking some interior, city events, internal city events, as we work through the initial operations, how we set up, how, you know, what, everything, how to use the equipment. We don't want to open up cold, so we will be able to entertain some city events to allow us to gain that experience before we open to the public. Starting July 1st, we will begin actively booking for future events, non-internal, so out to the public, which would start approximately October moving forward. So it'll give us a three-month period to operate it, again, get our bearings, understand how the flow's going to be, staffing needs and all that while we, while we take those three months to do that before we open to the public.
Before you go to the Neon Gardens, let me just remind the council, this is a project that's been underway even before I got here, it's been, it's probably since 2002. It is, we're very excited about the opportunity to take this historic property in Mesa and open it back up to the community. The basement, and we'll start at the basement, the basement area has and will continue to provide for storage for the Natural History Museum. There are some very important cultural artifacts that will be stored in the basement of this building, and so we needed to do the renovations to the building to create the climate control, the conditions that would be appropriate for the storage of many of the collections that we have received over several years, and so that will be in the basement. The basement also includes storage for the furniture and tables and chairs that will support the venue space. The venue space on the first floor is really fabulous, and when you walk into it, it really is, we've done an amazing job of opening up what used to be really two buildings side by side, and now we've opened it up so that you can have this big, long, continuous space. We've preserved a lot of the original brick, the terracotta, we didn't so much preserve the plaster, we got rid of the plaster, but the wood, the wood on the ceilings, and so this is going to be a really nice intimate venue space on the first floor, and it's going to have some serving area, or kitchen, I think kitchen, I don't know what Luis, what's the right?
Serving kitchen.
Serving kitchen on that floor with bathrooms, and then on the, you know, the second floor, I'm really excited that our transformation, downtown transformation group will have some office space that they'll have up on the second floor, which is turning out to be very nice, and giving them kind of a permanent location with offices that are right there in the middle of all the activity of downtown. So this is an exciting project that serves the needs of some of our departments, but also will create an opportunity to bring the community into this unique venue, so.
Yeah, Ms. Duff?
I just have one question, I really am so excited about this project. It'll also provide that kind of a missing area that we have, people wanting to hold events and not having convention centers too big, and some of our other options in downtown are too small, so that's the happy medium. Can you give me an idea, do you know right now the range of square feet that will be available for rental? I've had some people asking me, and I, you know, from like...
You have, and also the square footage, and kind of your, you've given an estimate as far as the number, like the seating capacity?
Yes, correct. It's not included in this presentation, but we do have estimates of seating plans of Councilmember Duff and capacity. So if it's a standing room only, let's say a reception, some, you know, some cocktail rounds, we're talking roughly about 300 people in both spaces. They're not equally sized, one is slightly smaller than the other, and the first slide has the, the actual square footage, but I believe it's about a 60/40 split with square footage within that 9,000 square feet with the, with a separating wall, which can be opened, and then you have that full. So at full capacity, both rooms, it's around 300 people standing, again, cocktail reception type of setting, seated around 200 if we're doing banquet, banquet rounds, and classrooms a little bit higher than that, classroom setting, so.
I think, Luis, you can split that by, like you said, 60/40, because we're going to have ability to create a...
An air wall, so there'll be...
An air wall between, so we can split that space if we need to, get even a smaller...
So the smallest would be like 3,000 square feet?
I, in, 4, 3,000, closer to 4,000, I believe.
Okay, 4,000 square feet, and whatever that would be.
And the other one's closer to 5 or so.
And the nice thing is, we can split it and have two events going on at the same time, or you could just have at least the smaller, or the bigger side.
The bigger, yeah, we're working through that operational consideration now, the kitchen is on one side of the building, so when do we just, you know, so we're trying to manage that now that we're getting closer to the, to the completion, so there will be quite a difference between the, I would call it the business model between the convention center and this. This will be more of a day segment type of rental, meeting in the morning, convention center, it's one day, you get the, that room for the entire day, this will be a little bit more, more of a flexible schedule, or if you just need to, we can do multiple meetings in one day as long as we have time to turn over the room, et cetera. So it'll be a bit of a different model, more of a, an hourly rental, if you will, as opposed to a full-day rental. So it will, even though it will be managed by the convention center, by our sales staff to book it, there'll be two different models.
And are we offering the backside of it, the west side of it, there's, or maybe sometime in the future?
It could be, yeah, it could be.
Okay.
Yes.
What did you say, what offices?
Jeff McVay's group, we call it downtown transformation.
So Jeff McVay's office will be there, and event staff and sales staff from the convention center, or for the commercial, so.
Entire second floor.
Well, there's two, there's a mezzanine, and there's a second floor, so there's kind of a half floor up.
Yeah, it's kind of just this portion of here.
So, okay, so now moving on to the Neon Garden, I believe this is the west side that you're speaking of, Councilmember Duff, correct? The Neon Garden is what we're calling it. If we go to the next slide, this is the, you know, I think the most appropriate thing to do right now, if you look at some of the earlier pictures, it's just a vacant lot, really, a parking surface. So what, what we're currently considering and in design for is about a 10,000-square-foot improvement to the exterior on the west side, which includes an enclosed garden, which, again, we're calling the Neon Garden, and I'll, I'll explain in a minute why that is, but it's programmable space that can be used in conjunction with events going on inside the building or a standalone event, so, but, and it will be gated, private for that type of setting. It will have entry off the street in case, in case we just want the public to come in there and enjoy food truck, that type of thing, without having to go through the building. So it's separate, yet joined if we would, if we would, if the event requires that. So a couple of ideas, and we have some renderings here, our food trucks, small concerts, there will be a stage which will be covered with lights and power so that we can do small intimate concerts, it will, it will not replace the amphitheater in any way, more either along with an event or a small Friday night concert or something of that nature, farmers markets and, and, you know, community events as well. So the reason why we're, we're currently naming it the Neon Garden is because we are selecting some of the historic neon signs from across the city, which you'll see here, and those will be installed throughout the perimeter. So some of those signs which you see up there are in good condition, for instance, the Dairy Queen is in the best condition, there are some that have been around a little longer and will need some refurbishment, as well as some reconfigurations to fit the space. But this, again, will be something that can, can be, the space can be open to the public, but as well passersby, drivers will be able to see this whether that's open or not, so it'll give a little bit of a gallery of, into Mesa's neon history. So the next slide explains where a timeline and what the estimated expense, cost is for the project, currently about $3.3 million, with a timeline of design starting right around now, this month or so, and a construction period of approximately a year, with a design going, you know, till, to the end of this year.
So just quickly, Luis, let me just remind the council, share with the council, I want to make sure we give credit where credit is due, the, the idea of preserving, preserving our neon sign history really needs to go, credit to Ron Peters and Vic Linoff, who really have, and the Historic Foundation, Preservation Foundation has really encouraged us since the, really, I guess, as we began the construction of Light Rel, where there were times there were conflicts with some of these signs that were on the edges, and we've, we're only seeing a, a small fraction, I don't remember what the total number is that we have, in our Neon Garden sign storage area, but we wanted to find a way to preserve those, bring those back, to highlight those, and so that's been something they've been very much promoting, and so when we saw the opportunity to redevelop this back area of the post office, the post, and you notice the post also kind of incorporates that neon sign concept, we're showing you a few of the neon signs here, we're also, the mayor knows this, but we're trying to do this so that it's kind of a ode to the diving lady sign, we're going to replicate that. These are, the ones you see here are the ones we're actually taking the current signs that we've, salvage is the right word, or whatever, and, and restoring those, and then, like the diving lady sign and some others, we're actually going to replicate on, on the site. So we're trying to create those as a unique setting. We've talked to Tim Sprague, who's developing Eco Mesa next door, they're very excited about the opportunity to have this, and what's nice is that, if you remember that Eco Mesa, the first few floors is public parking, so that's where, this, really the post and this Neon Garden works really well, because the public parking is right there next to this development, so.
Are we going to mount the signs before they're restored, or?
No, we'll send...
Only when they're restored?
Yes, and we've also, we've already contacted our local Guerrero Sign Group, that's really just amazing, and they've already gone to see the signs where they're at right now, and so, yeah.
Are we going to restore them, or we're going to end raise, or?
No, we're going to restore these, the ones we're going to put in this garden, we're going to restore, yes, we're going to, we're committed to making it a part of the whole Neon Garden concept.
Okay, so at least we'll have some signs to begin with instead of awaiting...
Right, yeah, that was the idea, this, we thought this was a great opportunity, and the signs, some, you know, once you get them down to ground level, they're huge, right, and so we're trying, we're trying to find a way to display them and make them, so the public can see them again.
Question?
Yeah.
I was just, what's the capacity for this outdoor area, then? Did you say that?
Well, that'll depend, we, we're still in the design phase, but again, about 10,000 square feet, and it will depend if it's, if it's a farmer's market, a wedding, exactly.
What do you think of, like, sit-down concert, what would that be, Luis, just off the top of your head, what do you think?
I'd say about 300 to 500.
Okay. So we're using the old loading dock for the post office and extending that out to be this kind of new stage concert?
I've stood on it, and I remember saying, "This would be the best stage," and they said, "That's what it's going to be."
Great idea!
I'm always thinking about a stage.
She'll be on.
And, and so you envision, like, food trucks being able to drive in there and...
Correct.
And be, okay, this is like really exciting, that's a fun space.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is this a question, is this open to the public, or is this for events that are happening that are booked? I foresee, like, folks would want to take pictures, or want to hang out there, so is it open for just people sitting there and taking selfies with the neon signs, or?
So Vice Mayor, her idea, yes, we've discussed that on different occasions, and if there's not an event that's using it, we have discussed opening it up to the public during certain business hours. Because of the access to the building itself, you know, it wouldn't be open during regular park hours, but if it's a staffed day, where, you know, we were talking about children coming over from the museum on their lunch break and being able to set up there, so yes, the idea would be to open that during certain times, especially if it's non-event days, because that is the parking area, the load-in for caterers coming in through the back, so it can't always be open, it's depending on the use of what's going on inside or outside.
Perfect.
Would there ever be an option to do rooftop? I know we're not at that phase, I don't even know if there's access to doing anything rooftop, it would be so cool.
Go on the building.
On the building, to have a rooftop venue, you know?
We weren't really kind of, I don't know, structurally, I think we're beyond that point.
I don't think that structurally it's ready for anything like that.
So that's not a possibility?
Yeah.
It would be a cool area to have.
Well, I would say what you do to get that view is you could go over to the, well, to the parking, the parking garage, and, because we've been on that tour, you can, you're in the parking garage, and you can look back down onto the park, it's pretty...
Eco Mesa Garage, or Pepper Garage?
Well, even the public parking garage is, goes up a couple floors, so.
The Pepper Street Garage.
And the Natural History has a small...
Garden on top of the parking garage.
All right, thank you.
Are you, will there be, like, benches, or, I mean, anything, like, if people wanted to go eat lunch over there?
Yeah, there's some hardscape that will be, that will be there for seating benches and things like that, necessarily in the middle, but...
Something, because obviously you want to make that area really flexible.
Right, and, and we'll, we'll probably come back for some FFNE approval for, for the exterior space as well, when that's, when that's in design, and we can see how, you know, what we need in order to furnish that and make that enticing.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
All right, should we move on to 2C, or?
Let's do that.
Or 2C, yeah.
So item 2C is presentation and to discuss Mesa's financial health, including the annual comprehensive financial report. So we have Mr. Kennington and Ms. Ashworth.
So let me just, go ahead, come on, Irma, we need a little break. So Vice Mayor, Council, there's been a few times where there's been some comments made about the city's financial position, and, and using some of the schedules from our audited statements. I think we just want an opportunity to share with the council, we don't, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this, we would want to share with you, from our CFO and our Director of Finance, kind of a, help understand how we read the financial position of the city, and also to do a perspective, historical perspective of the financial position going back five years to today, and talking about what that, what, how that's improved and where we stand today, so. Irma, I'll let you just go, this is just intended to be very quickly, because I just don't, I know it's sometimes uncomfortable, and somebody comes up, interprets our audits and comes to a certain conclusion, we thought we'd give you the professional staff's view of what we look at, so go ahead. And by the way, Irma is a recovering auditor, so she has done the job that we often, we pay, you know, she did, City of Phoenix, other, what cities were you involved in?
City of Phoenix, City of Tempe, Town of Gilbert, Scottsdale, never Mesa, though.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Mike Kennington, I'm one of our deputy city managers and chief financial officer. With me, as Mr. Brady said, is Irma Ashworth, our finance director, and today we'll, we'll talk about the financial health, using some of the, the tables that we have in the annual comprehensive financial reporting.
Good morning. As Mr. Brady said, the reason we're here today is to kind of put into perspective our financial position, considering, you know, what comments have been made at, at prior meetings. So what Mike Kennington handed out to everybody and was included in the materials is one of the pages from our financial statements, it's part of the management discussion and analysis, and it's meant to give a snapshot of the city's financial position and an analysis of it. So I'll just start with page one, just to kind of give you what's in there, so we, and we don't have to go through, we're not going to go through all the pages, but it is a snapshot of our city's revenues, our total revenues, and it's our city-wide position. There's three columns, the total column, total governments where I'll be talking, it identifies all the revenues that the city received, so for example, in 2019, it was a little bit over a billion dollars in revenues that the city received. And then it goes into the detailed of expenditures, broken up by our governmental activities and by our utilities. In that particular year, our total expenses were 950 million, for a change in net position of 120 million, so in that year, our revenue exceeded our expenditures by 120 million dollars. So that's kind of how all the pages are laid out. The chart that we have here summarizes the information for each of the five years, so total revenues in fiscal year 2018 were 999 million dollars, total expenditures were 920 million, and that particular year, a change in net position of 78 million. So what this shows is our growth over the last five years. We are not running at a deficit, we have a positive change in net position over those five years, and it increases our net position. Our net position is our total assets, our cash, our buildings, our infrastructure, less our outstanding liabilities, so that's the, what the net position stands for, and you can see how that has grown over the last five years as well.
So Irma, why don't you go back to that table real quickly, I know we've given the summary slide here, but work, what you just said, but go down through, to the bottom of this table, and show where those numbers are again.
So on the first page, on the column on the far right, 2018, total revenues of 999 million, 496 is the number that's in that chart, keep going down to the total expenditures of 920 million, 641, and then the 78 million is in two places, it's the net increase and the net position before transfers, and it's also our change in net position, and then the bottom number, net position ending, the 755 million dollars.
And let me just point out here, the right side, this is the entire organization, right? It's, we're not just piecemealing one fund or one activity, this will be the entire organization we're focusing on here.
And I guess the message that we want to send to council or share to the community is, we manage the entire city, right? We don't just go partway down the table and pick a number there, we manage the entire city as comprehensive, you know, financial position, and so we would share with council that since 2018, the net position, ending position as audited by outside auditors was just over, what, just over 755 million, that was in 2018. Today, in 2022, the most recent annual comprehensive financial report that was presented to council, that net position is now just over a billion dollars. Now, it's not only just revenues and expenses, and Irma said it, also it's our assets and liabilities net that, so this is the full, I guess, is comprehensive position and financial position of the city, you could probably find in the audit, Irma, this is, this is what this is intended to show overall. So from my perspective is, the city has continued to improve and strengthen its financial position. Now, there's a lot going on in here, that billion dollars, probably because of a lot of federal funding that we've gotten over the last...
Three?
Three years, from CARES, the ARPA, is infusing some of that significantly, but still, we are managing the position of the city, we're not spending more than we're bringing in, we're managing our resources such that we are in a very strong position for the city, so.
Question? Yeah, Councilwoman Speldbury and Councilwoman Duff.
So I really appreciate this summary, and it's easier for me to kind of, like, follow along, and, and I understand that you could pick any of these numbers and then have pages worth of information, right, and the act first, huge, and, and anyway, so this particular chart is available and accessible to the public?
It's online, yep.
And is it hard to find?
Are you speaking to the slide, or?
Well, I mean, this.
Yeah, this page.
Okay, this, yes, it, we post our financial statements, our act for, on the city's website, and I think we have like eight to 10 years' worth that posted at any point in time.
But every one of these, you could find?
And every single one of them has, in the beginning, it's the management discussion and analysis, and it's usually about 15 pages, it's a summary, so someone who doesn't have time or understand the full 280 pages of our financial statements, it's a good way to know what's going on with the city and how we did, because...
know what's going on with the city and how we did, because it talks about all the different parts of our financial position.
So I've never tried to access it on the website because you hand it to me. So I'm just wondering if, if someone goes on to access it, like are, is there a way to like click a link to the summary? Or do they need to go through the document to try to find the summary? Like how accessible is that?
It's a quick link to the statements, but they would have to flip through to find this.
Would we be able to put it on our website, like a summary of it so that it would be easier to find? This is a good story.
What we could do is, it's a PDF of our financial statements. We could make a bookmark for this, and then that way when they're there, they just know to look for the MDNA. And then that way they're not having to go through all the pages.
I just, I'm just thinking because we do hear that from constituents that are running at a deficit. We hear it at our council meetings. And I think that is hopefully not widespread belief, but there is a certain segment of our population that absolutely thinks we're running at a deficit. And I'm guessing that they're extrapolating certain information from some of those pages, right, that might show a deficit. But like you said, this is, we're looking at it as a whole. And so I, I think we need to be better at simplifying it or putting links to like the summary. So we're not trying to hide information or anything like that. It's just extremely complicated.
And maybe the next slide too kind of highlights that, the graph.
Right.
Of that too.
Again, it's, to me, it's obvious. I'm just wondering, the normal person that's clicking on the website.
We could take these slides and make them also easily available on the front.
That's a good idea.
That, we can absolutely do that. That would be an easy.
And I mean, then maybe we'll be accused of like hiding stuff. But, but again, they can find it all in those pages. But I just think for the general person that just kind of wants to see where we're at financially, let's make that easy and accessible.
We just want to share with the community and with the council that, I'm not an accountant, but as a manager of our city resources, when I'm looking at tables and information like this, you know, I was kind of always trying to go to the bottom of the page all the way to the right of the page to find. And when you see it says net position ending,
Yeah.
That's where we stand. And that's the number. There's a lot of numbers in between, but they help you understand how you get to that final number. And that's where we stand on. And that's, and then you'll notice in some, some of these pages, we've given you kind of the, where the auditors added some summary statements in here.
Yeah.
So at the end of the day, we just want to make sure everybody understands. We feel very comfortable. We're on very solid ground. And we wanted to make sure the representation, at least from what, how we look at it, is the professionals managing the city resources. This is how we look at it.
Well, and the fact that we are audited by outside agencies, like we couldn't hide things if we wanted to. So I, I just, I really think we need to just be screaming that from the rooftops so that people aren't assuming that we're doing shady things here, right? So let's make it really clear and obvious.
Councilmember Duff, Freeman.
Yes, looking at this, this is more of, as a business person, I would call a P and L.
Yes.
Kind of a cash flow and, you know, your revenues and expenses. And I see that we have line items for, you know, gains and disposal of capital assets, you know, our interest on long-term debt and such like that. But this is just our cash flow. It is not necessarily our assets and long-term liabilities.
This is our, closer to what you said earlier, the kind of P and L, your statement of revenues and expenses, yes.
Okay. And then just for my mind, no, we make the transfers from our enterprise fund into this, right? And so that is on the lower parts, right? Position before transfers, right? And then has the transfers.
Yes. And that's why we focused on the citywide, because the transfer is from one part of the city to another part of the city. So that really nets out to zero, right? When you're looking at citywide, you don't really have to take into account, into account the transfer.
And you can see that, the two same numbers between the business type activities and governmental activities.
Net zero.
Because it all zeros out.
Transfers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if you only look at one, yes, you would see a transfer going in to the governmental activities and the transfer going out of the business type. But we're looking at it as a citywide where it nets to zero.
So when we're looking at governmental activities, that is in its separate, as far as our utility activities are in a separate financial report? And then we transfer from that?
They are separate funds. And for financial reporting purposes, they also are reported separately. Our utilities and our business type activities, they're meant to represent what a business would be. And the governmental activities are all our city services. So they are broken up separately for presentation, and they do have separate funds.
Right. So.
But then at the end of the day, for us as a city, they come together.
Yeah, we are the whole of these two, the, this revenue, you know, our revenues and expenses is one report. We have our enterprise things and then the collective. And this is the summary of the collective, the two sides, two parts of how we do our accounting.
And just to be very clear, and I know it's sometimes hard for people who come from outside the city, maybe even people who've been in the city, but the city of Mesa has been operating this concept of the integration of those finances for over 80 years. It's not like a new phenomenon. We decided to use to plug and, you know, whatever, bail out the general fund. This has been a pattern that goes back to the 1940s. So it's, it's who we are. It's how we, it's the way this city made a decision how to look at its finances and operations and looking at them as an integrated whole.
Right. It's part of our financial plan.
Right.
And, and that, I just wanted to point out, because sometimes I'll have people refer to something with our enterprise and then make a criticism or something about that, but they're not taking consider, and vice versa. And we have to consider those. And this is, is bringing all that together. But yet the enterprise fund is not represented the, here, other than just our transfers.
The column that says business type activities is the enterprise funds.
That is, so it's interpreting the way auditors, they, by their standard GAAP have to use descriptions. But when you see business type, you can translate that into our enterprise or utilities. We see general governmental, for the most part, that's kind of general fund, but there's a lot of other things. This is a very complex system that we have that, you know, includes, some of those things kind of fall directly under governmental that are general fund, but not necessarily.
The governmental activities includes the general fund, all our special revenue funds, all our capital project funds, and our debt service funds.
So when you see the general fund presentation later today?
It is not this.
It will not look like this. So.
Councilmember Freeman?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to note and tag on to Councilmember Duff's comment that in lieu of having our enterprise fund, we do not have a primary property tax. And that's one of the benefits we have as a city, as an economic driver and a benefit to our residents that live here. And I think going to Councilmember, what's your name?
Spilber. Hard to remember.
Her comment is having a link that allows, I mean, our offices get people, will send us emails, well, how's the financial health of your city? And here's a great snapshot of a P and L that we can send, our council assistants can send out. And overall, I think this is very beneficial and it helps me understand it a little faster and easier. So there was one other thing that I'll think of it later, but regardless, this is a great snapshot. Thank you for doing this.
And I'll just add a, just to go on that topic on the, though we've been operating 80 years of this, we do have certain aspects that as such a large city, like not having a primary property tax, having an enterprise fund, that where we have, you know, gas, we have electric in our downtown, not that other cities don't have. And people compare us to other smaller cities that I think it's apples and oranges, right? And it's hard to, to do that in, in a way that is, is, goes to what we do here in the city. So this is a perfect example of how we use our funds that are coming in to spend on our, on our neighborhoods and our, and our roads and everything that we do as a city. So I think it's a complicated, complicated work that you all do. So it's, it's a test to all the staff that, you know, works hard to manage all the revenues that come in. We also don't have, you know, food tax that other cities enjoy.
Good point.
There's various different, different things that play into the part of how cities generate revenue. And we make sure that we utilize the resources that we have efficiently. And they Mesa has shown over the years to do that. So.
Thank you. And just a reminder, that transfer is established by ordinance, right? It's, it's a prescribed formula that's in there. It's not just, oh, this year we need whatever to match the budget. It's an ordinance that establishes that, what that amount is.
Yep. All right. Any other questions? Hearing none. Perfect. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, well, next item 2D or?
Let's do it.
Yeah, okay. So item 2D is a presentation to discuss fiscal year 2023, '24 summary of the proposed budget. And we have Brian Richel and Kristy Griffin. Welcome.
Morning, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Today, we kick off the, the budget process for fiscal year 23, '24 for the city manager's proposed budget. And so what I kind of like to say is this, within the next few weeks, probably about the month, is kind of budget intensive. So we will, I will give a, the proposed overview of the budget and kind of the themes that are within, highlighted within the budget. And then the departments in the, for the next four weeks will be coming and presenting their individual budget, some of them will be presenting their individual budget departments and going into more details with that. So as I said, my name is Brian Richel. I'm the Director for the Office of Management and Budget. With me, I have Kristy Griffin, who is the Budget Coordinator of the Office of Management and Budget. So the city is required on an annual basis to adopt a balanced budget. What that is is the, your, the city's resources match or sufficient to cover the budgeted expenses. And also what is required is the, the adoption of a secondary property tax, and that is used for our debt service. As mentioned before in the previous, in the previous presentation, the city does not have a primary property tax, but we do have a secondary property tax that does pay for the debt service for capital projects. Also, what the annual budget does is sets the maximum expenditure limit for the city's fiscal year. So the overarching theme of the city manager's proposed budget is innovation and inclusivity. So what we're looked at is we ask the departments to think of innovative programs that bring in the community also and apply to the community and bring it all within the city's departments and community. So that's kind of the overarching theme of the city manager's proposed budget for 23, '24. And in doing that, what we do is we begin focusing on some of the impacts that will be, that we're looking at for fiscal year 23, '24. Some of the major ones are the labor cost increases and attracting qualified workforce. Others are, as we've noticed, higher than normal inflation on commodities, services, and contracts. Another one is utility cost increases. We've seen those of presentations of, for the past couple of months with water, water costs going up. Another one is that a focus is the trees are cool in the climate, the Mesa Climate Action Plan. And then cost overruns and delays on receiving capital construction materials. And then storages and, sorry, shortages and cost increases related to fleet fuel, fleet fuel supplies and parts. So we've seen with a, with the fuel and parts are increasing significantly. One is due to the fuel shortage from California, and others are just parts are increasing. So this part of the presentation will cover the general governmental fund. And as presented before, the city has five principles that we like to follow with the general governmental fund. First one is balancing the net sources and uses. Number two is keeping the reserve fund balance over the five-year forecast in between 10 and 15%. The city policy that has, that is adopted by council is eight to 10, but as a principle, we try to keep that a little above to 10 to 15. Also, we look at sustainability of programs and services, keeping wages and benefits competitive compared to other valley cities, and then investment in capital and lifecycle replacement projects. So what the city does, what staff does in the beginning is we do a financial forecast. We, we look at current expenditures, but then also historical expenditures and revenues over multiple years. We then do a multiple year forecast, which allows us to evaluate the sustainability of programs and services. So what that does is over those five years, we don't just look at next year that we're going to adopt. We look over the five years to see, will that program be sustainable over the five years and then some going on? We just don't look at the one year to see, is it sustainable now? What's going to happen the following year? And then also we look at future needs are incorporated to enhance the ability to plan. And then one big part is the financial policy calls for ongoing revenues for ongoing expenses, which means that what we don't do is with the one-time revenues, fund ongoing expenditures. So for instance, contracting, sales tax, that we consider a one-time expense because projects start and stop. So the sales tax from that is a one-time expense, or one-time revenue, sorry. And we don't use those for ongoing expenses for staffing, things like that, because we're not sure if that revenue is still not going to be there and fund that. So we focus on ongoing revenues and ongoing, funding ongoing expenses. So with the revenue forecast, we subscribe to the University of Arizona to get what we call macro data. So data for the state and for the Phoenix metro area. We then put it into a software and put in the city of Mesa specific indicators such as wage growth, unemployment, building permits. But then also we go a little deeper into economic development activities, what projects are going on, what the retail trends, trends are. And then we also have included, which you'll see is a economic correction has been in the news lately, of economic recession coming. So we have put in for the fiscal year, proposed budget of 23, '24, a, the beginning of a recession moving on through the forecast for the next year. So operational expenditure forecasts, we look at the categories individually. So personal services, we look at individual things of personal services such as pension rates, medical premiums, salary movement. Other services and commodities, such as large specialty contracts handled separately, while forecasting consumer price index is applied to some of the general expenditures. And then on the capital, we look at the majority of the expenditures are related to construction projects, vehicle purchases. And within those, the personal personnel priority expenditures, public, the PSPRS, Public Safety Personal Retirement System, we look at that. However, this year is mains consistent. 23, '24 is going to remain consistent with 22, '23. The Arizona State Retirement System, ASRS, is going up slightly from 12.17 to 12.29. The medical premiums increase at 5% for calendar '23, so this current calendar. And we're looking to increase calendar in, within the budget by 5% for calendar '24. And then also what the city does is we continue to provide competitive pay and benefits for the city employees. Other priority expenditures, which I've, I've mentioned is capital projects.
Brian, we have a question.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman.
Hi, Brian, thanks. Sorry to interrupt, but when you're on the topic on the public safety personnel, the additional funding paid, I know we have a dollar amount earmarked to that. Can you remind me the dollar amount?
So yes, for the, the PSPRS payment that we do, the public safety retirement, we have budgeted around 78 million dollars of, for, so what we did two years ago is, beginning this fiscal year, we started to, instead of doing a payment and relying on the actuarial, which we showed a graph that was exponentially going up of our payments, we looked at the, the next 25 years and looked to see if we can do a flat payment over those years and what that return on investment would be. And it's around 78 to 84 million dollars. It can fluctuate throughout that forecast to be able to sustain that. And it's much easier to forecast than it was using the, the state's numbers of the actuaries.
So we traded a variable, a increasing rate that we saw that was just going to compound, it's not compound, but it was going to continue to grow and grow to get to that final payout, the, the unfunded liability. And so what we said, well, may, well, our better option would be to significantly increase what we're paying now and try to get to kind of, I'll call it a level. paying now and try to get to kind of, I call it a level payment that's within a certain range. And it just makes the modeling for our forecast work so much better that we can plug in a number that's, you know, within a percentage, you know, plus or minus, and stick it out throughout the forecast as opposed to having these ascending numbers that just continue to put tremendous pressure. And by paying more than we normally would, if we were just paying on that scale, we'd be paying less. By paying more now, we're actually reducing because we're paying down that interest faster than we would be if we were just doing it on the minimum payment each year.
Yeah, it's just like your mortgage if you want.
Yeah, we're trying to get up to that level payment.
Yeah. And I was just questioning about how much additional funding we're paying on top of the.
Yeah. So I don't, do you remember what the difference would be?
I thought it was like 24 million or something.
For the three years, it was around 24 million. For the first year, I believe it was around 14 million, then it started reducing a little bit to catch up. But it was around 24 to 25 million in the first three years of being, of doing that.
Yeah, but, you know, for some of the council, I mean, that unfunded liability is a big number that we have to pay off. So, thanks.
Being, trying to be more aggressive with it.
Yeah, and it's going to save us money in the backend, too.
We got one more question?
Yeah. I believe last year, we used tax revenue from cannabis and applied it to this paydown. I mean, I don't know if that's a standard way we're going to apply that revenue, or it's just one that we just kind of did it as a one-time. And is that going to be part of the formula ongoing?
So Vice Mayor, Councilmember Duff, yes, that is correct. So we have the, that is an additional on top of the 78, 80 million. We use the, the sales tax that we receive from the state on the marijuana sales to apply for the public safety, the unfunded liability portion.
Do you remember what that amount?
It's around 2 million, 2 to 3 million a year.
No, but, but the council, by policy, we said, we're going to take that sales tax, put it back in public safety, and specifically to unfunded liability, so.
So other priority expenditures, as I mentioned, as you've seen, capital expenditure, capital project costs are coming in significantly higher than originally estimated due to significant increases in material costs, but then also delays in receiving those. Other priorities is the Mesa Climate Action Plan, as mentioned before, but within that, we also have the Trees Are Cool Initiative that we'll be focusing on. And then facility improvements and capital projects, we have the Neon Gardens, which was presented earlier, the council chambers, and then also Fire Station 223 for Lehigh.
So, and just real quickly, Brian, I just want to mention the council. Brian made a very important point early on, talking about one-time revenues matching up with one-time expenditures, ongoing revenues with ongoing expenses. The, the, and you'll see this later, the construction costs, or the construction sales tax we're getting is, is very robust. But that's really helping us offset some of these inflationary pressures on construction projects that are going over, we're getting cost overruns on. So we're taking those and putting them in facilities, especially projects that are having overruns, or being able to take on projects like a Neon Garden where we can take the sales tax, the one-time sales tax from construction sales tax, and use that as a payment and not impact our ongoing revenues over a period of time. So you'll see how we're trying to mix and match those concepts of construction activity that continues to go very well for the city, and recognizing that probably not going on for the next 20 years, but we can use that, what we're receiving now, use it for offsetting inflationary overruns as well as specific projects.
So the city manager's proposed budget for 23-24 highlights eight themes. And what I'll do is, the themes are listed here, and then I'll briefly, in this, in the next slides, will briefly describe them. However, the departments that are associated with these themes will then be doing a more detailed presentation when they come up and do their budget presentation in the next couple of weeks. So some of the themes are increasing public safety staffing, downtown safety, park security, neighborhood cleanup, increasing pedestrian access, homelessness, resources and assistance, and then also workforce development, and then the Trees Are Cool Initiative. So the first one, increasing public safety staffing, to do that, we have, the staffing, we'll hold three police recruit academies. We'll continue to do that throughout this year and throughout the forecast. But then also, this year, we are looking to do two firefighter recruit academies. The estimated number of recruits for these academies is, for police, is about 110 academies, and then also for fire is about 50 firefighters for those two academies. The next.
How does this, 110 officers sounds like a lot, but we're also hitting that 20-year mark. 20 years ago, we hired quite a few police officers. How are we doing on balance with trying to get up to 100% staffing?
So that's a, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Summers. So that is what we're looking at to plan over the next few years with these, is that we've, we began doing three academies, I think, last year or the year before. To be able to do that, we're, we are seeing some attrition, or not attrition, but some retirements from that 20 years of the police officers. So what we, we do is, the three academies equals about 110 recruits. It estimates to about 77 officers that we hope to bring on. So I think within the next few years, we're still working with, and they'll present more detail on this, the police department will, when they present in a couple of weeks, on that plan to where, how that staffing is going to hopefully come up to 100%.
So the good news is, we have the authorized positions and the funding to net plus up total police and firemen. And what's, and the challenge, though, to your point, is that attrition rate over the last couple of years has been a little bit higher than we had expected. But what we anticipate, we've seen, and the chief will talk about that, we've seen that begin to level off. And so what we're hoping is, actually, in the next two years, that the total number of, not positions, but actually filled positions, patrol officers and firefighters, will actually be higher than it's been in the last three years. So we're going to be seeing more and more police officers actually on the street over the next couple of years. So it's not just, we have all these positions, but, and we have the money to fill them, it's just getting the bodies through the academy. And, like you're saying, it's kind of like, as we bring them out, we also have to account for those who are retiring or leaving, while we're still trying to not only keep those, backfill those positions, but we're also trying to add a total more. So running these additional academies, we're hoping to, like you said, not only get to full staffing, but we want to go above and beyond. And so I think we're going to be one of the few large cities that's saying we're actually increasing total staffing.
So maybe we'll have, to your point, have police and fire.
Yep. I think you get.
Put that in their presentation.
Yeah, no, believe me, it's their lead-off statement.
Yeah.
Just a comment on the, I'm sure we'll get more information, but what's that net budget amount that we have?
Yeah, I think for the next two years, I want to say police is a little more than 60, Kristi, am I about right? Or is that all total additional?
May have. Oh, it may have been a little bit less than that, but I think it was right around there.
They'll have that number. The total additional police officers, above and beyond what's currently on the streets today.
And for fire?
And fire's driven by opening up fire stations. We try to get the new crews out there like a year ahead of, the head, so they're already, some of them already showing up in additional areas.
But we do have, it's kind of that attrition as well, right, based on retirements there. So having a net number of what we're adding.
We're trying to get ahead of it.
Right, so.
So, yeah, Vice Mayor.
Yep. No, he's just volunteering to.
So Vice Mayor, to your point, included in that 50 of the two academies, Fire Station 223, those recruits are within this academy to bring them on a year before that fire station would be on.
And we've got to get them for Lehigh, start getting them into the academy, too, while we're planning and building the fire station.
So the next theme is downtown safety. And to do that, we're, the city's looking to increase public safety presence in the downtown by providing a downtown police ambassador program, but then also adding cameras connected to the real-time crime center. The next theme is park security. With park security, the city's looking to increase in the parks along with, so increase the security in the parks, along with additional activities and programs. So families and fun and fitness-type programs that would be offered into the, into the parks. But then also, provide additional park rangers and CCT cameras to seven parks within the city. And then also, add a park ranger position to the real-time crime center to assist in monitoring those cameras. And then also, increase city-sponsored activities within, we'll do a pilot within the Pioneer Park downtown.
Question on the cameras, I don't know if we should wait until we have presentations, but since you mentioned these, are these like permanent cameras, or are we talking about the, I know we currently have these mobile cameras that we have.
Vice Mayor, I think we'll have them come, I believe their preference is to have the stationary ones, then, and put multiples in so they can get views on the whole park. Because I think the limitation with the mobiles is kind of a limited, yeah. So we can have them speak to that.
Okay, perfect.
I have a thought on that, just a question. Do the cameras sometimes substitute for a park ranger, a police officer? I mean, additional eyes in the sky, so to speak?
Yeah, so I want to.
And that could, you know, marry the two together.
Oh, no, that's the whole idea, right? And I, I don't want to use the word substitute. I, I like the word magnified or amplify their presence. So we're adding more park rangers. So there's, there's nothing that can really, you know, replace a person going through. But now, the cameras are 24/7, and that's why we like then actually putting someone in the real-time crime center who's just watching the cameras around the parks. And that, we think that elevates that response. I mean, we could, you know, the police department, the real-time crime center, they could all be, they're, they're watching so many different views, but we think that we want to elevate the attention, I guess, to the parks and what's happening in the parks, by adding more park rangers, adding more cameras, and actually, and we'll let Andrea speak about this when she comes, is this idea, we need to be providing more programs in the parks, so it brings people in, and there's someone there conducting a program. We think that will also help. So, but we'll talk, we'll bring more of that forward, so.
Are, are they going to talk about it? There's been an increase in incidents in the parks.
Yeah, certainly, we're seeing things with homelessness, graffiti, those are all indicators. And just a general sense, and I, you know, just talking with members of the council, concerns from residents about, they don't feel safe in parks. And so it's all of those that we're, what we're trying to address.
One additional question, is a civilian or sworn personnel monitoring the cameras in the real-time crime center?
I think, well.
That's a question.
Yeah, we can ask that question. Okay, yeah, we can.
I just, I'm sure.
Civilians, yeah, we'll talk about that.
Mayor, council, it's usually, it's civilians. They will, they will have some sworn in there for now, but it'll be civilians. So the neighborhood cleanup is a collaboration between the Community Services Department and Solid Waste Department. They're going to team up to provide an expanded roll-off service for the neighborhoods within the city. This service will provide roll-off dumpsters to piloted areas around the city at first, and then expand. So they will be presenting, Community Services and Solid Waste will present, be presenting more detail on that. And then increasing, the other theme is increasing pedestrian access. This is with the Transportation Department and Transit Department. This is to promote safe and efficient multimodal transportation system. To do that, what we're looking to do is bring on an in-house concrete crew. This will help staff and equipment bring it on for the repairs of sidewalks, curbs, gutters in a more timely fashion, so that access is there for the pedestrians. Another collaboration between city departments is the workforce development theme is economic development, and then the Education and Workforce Office. Mace, what they'll be looking to do is, in association with the, one of the big ones is the, the small business at the studios, but bring, so Mesa Job Connect Platform, a one-step portal online for businesses to connect with the workforce, but also for Mesa students to create a pathway to employment, and also access to jobs and resources, and then also for the Mesa job seekers to connect with open jobs in Mesa. But then also for that is those, those two departments to build partnerships with school districts, local businesses, to ensure widespread use and success of the program. The next theme is focused homelessness assistance slash prevention. So there's four things that the Community Services Department is going to be focusing on. One is creating, the creation of an office of homeless solutions with a, with the coordination of housing to pathways recovery, but then also ensuring quality service for off-the-streets programs, and then also ensuring quality service for community navigator programs. Another area of focus is to increase support for the housing voucher programs. Then also, new housing stability case management program. This is dependent on a pending grant. So if we get the grant, we'll be able to implement this. And then also, dedicated support for education slash marketing on existing programs. The next theme is Trees Are Cool Initiative. What the city is doing is looking to launch a, the Trees Are Cool Initiative by conducting community outreach, but then also holding city-sponsored tree planting education and activities. So what this, the education activity would be is to, to teach the, the residents of Mesa not just how to plant, but also take care of the trees. We're looking to, not to just plant trees, we're looking for them to grow and then add to what we already have, existing trees, and it's kind of part of the mayor's 1 million tree initiative. So those are the eight themes that the city manager's proposed budget highlights. This next slide, all those eight themes are incorporated, and here is the fiscal year 23-24 proposed budget. It's highlighted there in the middle. So as mentioned before, what we look at is the, the total net sources, total uses, and then the net sources and uses. But then if you look, the ending reserve balance, we are still at a healthy 155 million with the proposed budget at a 25.8%. And then on out, on fiscal year, or forecast fiscal year 27-28, we are looking at a reserve balance of about 13.4%. So that is within the, the principles of the city that we, we look to do when we're forecasting out those revenues and expenses. As I mentioned before, the economic correction, we do have forecasted for this coming up proposed budget, but then also, it trickles into fiscal, fiscal year 24-25. You may not, it may not look like that with the total resources. That is due to the significant, primarily is due to the income tax offset that the state did. So that's why it doesn't, looks like the revenues are greater, are, are much higher than previous years, is due to that offset.
Is this a good time for questions on this before we move over to utility fund? Okay. Just a quick question, or two questions. On the homeless assistance prevention, which budget, like, who will do that presentation? Like, Community Services or Police?
Well, that'd be mostly, what, this presentation, you'll see, will come from Community Services that we're referring to here.
Okay.
Now, there is a citywide, you know, collaboration on homelessness, so it's police, it's parks, it's, but we're the housing of the staff that, and we're, you know, essentially, you can see, we're really continuing to involve the Housing Homeless Solutions Group because we really, you know, Natalie can't just do all of it, so we're trying to.
She could, but.
Trying to create a whole division to.
She's capable of.
But we're recognizing, we need to have coordination, we need to have someone who's doing this, working with all the departments, working with our nonprofits, and collaborating, and really trying to address these issues. So we'll talk more about that, but that will be mostly, as we're talking about here, coming from Community Services.
Okay, because obviously, I, I know we'll get more information, and I can ask my questions, but I just was wondering which budget to look for for that.
Yep, that'll be the one.
And then I, I really like how you did not go notice that the different strategic council priorities are stuck on each slide. And so, of course, I checked to see if they were all covered, and thriving economy was the one that wasn't a particular slide. So I was just curious if we just, is that because all of this feeds into a thriving economy? I mean, the workforce development slide, that to me screams thriving economy.
Yeah, I think that's probably right. I think that's where it would probably fit. There's, there's, these are just some themes, there's going to be a lot of other things we'll talk about. But that's a very good point. And as a matter of fact, just, we're looking at actually moving that office and working in, being part of some of those offices that are over at the economic development offices today.
Because it is tightened so much.
This idea that there's a lot of collaboration between the education workforce. This idea that there's a lot of collaboration between the education workforce group and economic development, so.
Cause obviously everything, like we've talked about this portal and stuff at our education workforce roundtable. So obviously all of this leads into a thriving economy, right? So just, I, I, I found it interesting as we've had such robust conversations the last few months of our strategic priorities for our council, to see how they all tie into like, what are we actually going to do and put into our budget? So I just, I thought that it was cool to cover that as well.
Yeah, fair point, yeah.
Thank you.
I don't want to get too much in the weeds because the budget is huge and we have a lot of departments to go, but a couple of things from our priorities, and I want to make sure, and maybe we'll discuss it later, is support for the studios and small business support and the workforce development, whatever, you know, the programs, we're going to do the studios. And I think multi-use paths have been a priority for the council and to accelerate some of the plans on the city's transportation budget.
Sure. So on the studios, that is, it was more of a timing of when that would be open. And just based on our preliminary, it may not, it would be the very latter part or go into the, we'd probably address it in the next, next budget. So that's, it was, it was, and there was, there was a budget, there was a budget package for it, but it was probably not to the very, very end of this budget. So if it comes up and we can open up before the end of this fiscal year, we'll come back and address it. Otherwise it'll probably just be the first part of the next budget year. And then the, the pathways, we've, what we've addressed for that typically throughout, every time we've done that has been, and we can talk about this in our, one of the next presentations, is through the bond program, right? That's because those are usually addressed as part of the, our Mesa Moves Transportation Program, and that's how we've, so we're, we're going to tease up an opportunity to look at a 2024 opportunity for projects like that. Does that make sense? Okay.
I just have a quick, really quick question on the homelessness assistance and prevention. That is, that does not include any kind of plan or budget incentives or anything for just affordable housing, workforce housing, that is not in there? This is homelessness only? So is that anywhere? We, have we?
I, we have not, we say, and I'm not sure what the other would be. The incentives for what?
It could be federal dollars, home, and. Yeah.
Just like what's our plan for affordable housing for the city, right?
I'm not getting that out, but yes, I mean, are we, it just seems like it maybe could fit under.
It could. I don't, we don't have a program like that today. And I think that we would really need, I think I'd want to spend more time with council talking about how we use the role of our federal funds for that, what our, what the city role would be in that, so, yeah.
Because there are a couple of ways us as a city can incentivize that, a program like that.
Yeah, and thank you for asking the question. And so the development services staff is also going to be looking at specific tools that might help us expand the ability for people to, you know, build things like accessory dwelling units and looking at how we're using our land and our space. So I do think you're going to see a lot more of that conversation about affordable housing, but also about all kinds of housing in Mesa within the balanced housing plan coming forward with the general plan.
But it's not, yeah, I would say it's, right now, there's nothing in this budget for that, talked about. I think that's a policy conversation we need to have, because I don't feel like I haven't, I wouldn't know what that direction looks like right now, so. But I'm not saying we should, it's just something I think we need to evolve that conversation more, so.
You know, can I just add that we, I was in a meeting yesterday with a lot of the city of Mesa housing staff, asking the question, what can we do to lobby for more light tech and affordable housing projects in Mesa and kind of grease the skids a little bit? Because it has been a few years since we've had a light tech project, the nine percent, you know, really competitive projects. And, and there are some partners out there, you know, school districts and churches and others that, that want, that have excess land and want to tackle, you know, as part of their ministries or part of their, their missions or for their employees or for their students, more affordable housing projects. So I, yes, I, a hundred percent, there's a role for the city to play there, but it's really in attracting the federal dollars and to accomplish that. So there are some, there's an action plan for us to, to meet with the new Arizona Housing Director, continue to lobby him for maybe tweaking the criteria that would make Mesa more successful in getting some of those projects. I'm sorry, her, you're right, thank you. So yes, that, I don't want to leave this topic without saying that, yes, I think our eyes are wide open on this being a goal for our city to attract and nurture more affordable housing.
Need for something to come out of the budget to support that is what we need to.
Yeah, this is very operational, right? This is positions not at that scale right now. So I think it's kind of where the mayor talked about that we want to support that too, so.
Mr. Reddy.
I think, just to piggyback, I didn't see, are we still pursuing the, the hotel?
Yes, yes, and that's, yes.
That'll be part of the homeless piece.
It'll, yeah, and it's kind of, you know, we're bringing that as part of the ARPA funds and that whole dialogue, but we, we will be coming back to council on that.
Okay. I do suggest that we, we look at, you know, any policy pieces, you know, zoning pieces, right, as far as looking at the technical piece, but also if we have city land or we have, you know, working with, you know, the school district, like the mayor said, or nonprofits or churches to see, you know, the potential for a collaboration around small lot or housing or, you know, those kinds of things that I think takes a little bit more discussion that we need to have on the policy side and how we get involved in, in, in waiting for federal funding, but i- if there's starting points that we can leverage as a city to initiate that next level from the homeless housing emergency shelter piece to more of the stability housing piece. I think that's the gap that we're missing as far as affordability piece, so.
Yeah. And so I will just be clear, what you're going to see from community services right now is still dealing with kind of that emergency transitional homeless, that's what we're addressing here. And we can have these other conversations, but just to be clear, I think when you hear from our presentation, it's handling that kind of crisis approach at the beginning, so. All right, should we move to utility side?
Okay. So on the utility side, the utility fund financial principles, they're very similar to the principles of the general governmental fund. Balanced net sources and uses, we try to achieve a 20% or higher reserve fund balance. Rates, adjustments that are predictable and smooth throughout the forecast, so, so there's no spikes and, or drops, significant drops in, in rates for the customers. Equity between residential and non-residential rates, and then affordability of utility services. What I'd like to highlight here is the first two, balanced net sources and uses and 20% or higher reserve fund balance. As a few presentations, you've heard in with the forecast of increasing commodity costs. So it's been, it's difficult to maintain those two here with the significant increases in water costs, chemicals, commodities, things like that. So taking that into consideration on sources, sources, which are also revenues forecasting. We work with the, the city works with the, OMB works with the utility departments and looks at the revenues, includes statistical analysis, but also collaboration. And then we use a software similar to the general governmental fund with economic trends to forecast out revenues. And then also what we do is look at relevant economic indicators such as population growth, review of historical trends, and also a big one is consumption and usage. We also look at factors that are applied on economic development activities, any large customers, things like that, that may, that may affect their revenues and the account growth. On the uses forecasting or the expense forecasting, departments provide us a forecast of large budget items that can fluctuate over time. As I mentioned, water, the water commodity purchases, any treatment chemicals, solid waste for their tipping fees. So we use, we put those in there. Then also the debt service payments, which includes the utility fund forecast for any debt service for the projects that we, that we do. So we use the, the debt service to fund those projects, any significant projects. So focusing on the personnel priority expenditures, similar to the general governmental fund, we have the Arizona State Retirement System slightly increasing, also the medical premiums, staying consistent at five percent growth each year for the calendar year of 23 and 24. But then also what we do is we continue to provide, look to provide competitive pay and benefits for all city employees. So the challenges, as I mentioned before, the challenges for the utility departments is the cost, significant increases for commodities, water, chemicals, even electricity. Those are having a significant impact on the department's budgets. And then also capital project costs are coming in significantly higher than originally estimated due to significant increases in material costs, but also delays in receiving project materials. For example, the AMI meters. However, the, as the city manager mentioned earlier, with some of those cost overruns, it's with the bonds that we have, some of the bonds that were previously, we were authorized for so much. However, with the cost increases, we have those cost overruns. So the theme for the utilities is meeting community needs and growth. For the water department and wastewater, it's the water and wastewater projects and maintaining current service levels. For instance, we have the projects of the, the reused pipeline, but then also just maintaining our system with the growth of accounts. And, and then also with solid waste, it's account growth with the residential and also commercial. And then also to support for several significant gas and electric growth projects and maintaining those. So really the, the theme for the utility departments is the growth that is happening within the city, but then also trying to maintain the, the system that we have currently. So in doing that, the, for the proposed budget for 23, 24, we are still looking at a healthy fund balance, ending reserve at about $92.5 million and 18.6%, which is still in between or, in between or above our financial forecast. However, when you get to the later years, the, the five-year forecast of 27, 28, we are looking at dipping below our financial policy forecast of eight to 10%. Where right now, we're at 6.4%. However, we do monitor this on an annual basis and forecast five years on an annual basis. So we do still keep a look at how the forecast will be. This is a very conservative forecast and what, and it also has, was I mentioned, the significant costs of those commodities. For instance, water is significantly increasing due to the, what we call CAP, the Central Arizona Project, those water costs have gone up significantly. But then also chemicals to treat, the, the water and wastewater have gone up significantly. So, but we, we are aware of the, the forecast, we, for this coming up fiscal year, for the proposed budget, we will, looking to end at 18.6. But however, as previously mentioned, we will keep looking at this. We look at our forecast on a quarterly basis or more and to see how, work with the departments on see how those revenues and expenses are going.
And Brian, even in this forecast, which the concern is it's structurally imbalanced right now. If you look at the net sources and uses, that continues to draw down, that reserves, and that's, that's a concern. But the assumption in this revenue forecast makes the assumption of the rates that we've been showing council that are implied every year throughout the period too, right? There's all of those rates and we'll be getting into the rate discussion in fall, but this also includes annually increases in all of these different categories. I think the concern is, and you're seeing this from all the utilities around the valley, they're making additional adjustments to their rates. We're going to have to talk about this in the fall, but just know, this already assumes the rate increases that we've been showing historically throughout this period. But apparently, and just based on this and the extraordinary inflationary pressures, it's not quite, it's not, we don't have a sustainable net sources and uses right now, right? You can see it's, it's structurally imbalanced. So that's something we may have to talk about and address when we get to the fall, when we talk about rates. And part of it is what we're building into this is the cost of water increases and the charges that are continuing to grow throughout the forecast period, so.
Mr. Billsbury.
So on slide 21, where you show like your principles, it says 20% or higher for the reserve fund balance. And so since we are, is there a range on there we're trying to do? Or since we're at 18%, like is there something we need to be doing right now to hit that 20%? Or we just let it slide until we go to the fall for utility?
No, we, well, what we're showing you in the, we should do the proposed budget now, then we'll come back in fall and talk about rates, because we talk about implementing rates at the beginning of a calendar year as opposed to implementing rates in the middle of a summer. Cause that's always been offered during the high use. We're like hitting people with a new rate increase.
When they're already paying the most of the year.
Right. So, but yes, I think what this tells us, that we would say to the council is, this may suggest what we need to review those rates and look at what helps us address the 18%, but also addresses that net sources and uses.
So, but we don't do anything currently right now to.
Yeah, the rates are where we make that difference. But we're, we're going to propose this budget, but we're also going to tell, we're telling you, we need to talk about rates, review those when we get to the fall.
Okay. And, well, okay, yeah, I guess we'll just continue that conversation then. All right. There's no range though? It's not.
Oh, no, we tried to stay in that range. We tried.
But what, it just says 20%, so what's the range?
So, so yes, mayor, council member, Spillsbury, so the principles, what we, what we look for is the city principles for that is higher than 20%. So we're looking to get that 6.4 up to higher than 24%. So what the council has adopted in our financial policy, that council has adopted, is eight to 10%. So that is.
That was the, for the general fund, but that's for.
That is, so the, yes.
This too?
This too. So the financial policies are adopted on an annual, I believe on an annual basis during the budget process. So these are the principles we like to hold ourselves to.
Right.
However, the, the policy that council has adopted for the city is between eight to 10%.
But council, Spillsbury, you're right, from a. We look at the enterprise differently because it's based on rates.
Right.
And there, there's a lot more sensitivity into how those can move. And so for that reason, you have the council stated, adopted policy, but as a management practice, we tell you, we really should be right above that 20%.
Okay. And that's what I was wondering, because I, I understood what the, what the stated versus what we're shooting for, I just didn't feel, I didn't hear that in this aspect of it.
So the stated formal one, we actually adopt it, the council adopts it by vote.
It's only eight to 10.
And we, for, and we put that out there to the rating agencies and say, this is what we are. Internally, from a management perspective, we come back to you and say, in this area, we really think it's supposed to be almost double that.
But as far as the eight to 10%, we're way over it. So that's where, that's why we're comfortable to a point, but then not really moving forward.
We're, we're getting, yeah, we're very, we're getting concerned on this.
Trying to understand that better, thank you.
Mr. Reddy.
Question on, do you still apply some innovations that are happening in our utilities like we, you do on our general governmental budget? Like the pipeline, the water pipeline? I'm assuming that will have some ease and some cost, but I don't know, how do you, how do you integrate that piece? I think towards the end, right, the 26, is it going to go in line?
Yeah. And then it's, so that the advantage of that pipeline, the central pipeline is, there's significant cost there, but the, as you, as you're mentioning, the water cost for that is so much cheaper. And so it, I think it's a six, seven year payback, meaning that we can, we invest all that capital dollars, but the, the, the difference in the water that we get versus the water we derive from somewhere else, it pays for itself pretty quickly. And that just, it probably doesn't show up in this forecast because this is covering debt service, but over a period of time it does, yeah.
So there, mayor, vice mayor, it, we do have the central reuse pipeline and those credits in here. And if I believe, if I'm correct, it does show up around 26, 27. It's like right at the tail end of this forecast that we start seeing the benefits of that reuse pipeline. So we do take those into consideration as, the one thing we don't put in here is kind of speculation of some of those bigger projects that may be revenue generating or bringing more accounts on some of those bigger ones. We wait and we collaborate with the departments and being able to see, okay, when will we start servicing those? We don't like to forecast it because if something happens, they may delay their construction. And so then. And so then we may have to move it here. So we try to work with those on those big ones of when that will actually happen and then incorporate it in here at that time.
Okay. And does it happen where you, you have the ending reserve balance for this year, 18.6, where either increases or decreases? I can't remember the, because over, over the time I've been on council, like we never fall below, you know, 10%, I think, from any of these. So, but during a specific year, does it, does it fluctuate even what you have right now here, I'm assuming, right?
Yes.
Based on the accounts that are coming in, if these large warehousing in East Mesa come online faster or something? I don't know if that, or just various different things that happen, right?
So, yes, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is the proposed budget. So this is what we would budget at this point in time. But however, if we see more increases in accounts, that revenue will go up or even for treating water for if we have a, like for the instance, this fiscal year, we're having much more rain than normal. So what will happen is we'll produce less water if there's less usage, but then also the expense of that treatment will go down because we're not treating as much. So we do fluctuate throughout the year. This is just the budget so we can budget it. But yes, we will, we monitor this, this fund, the utility fund, monthly, quarterly, and take a look at how those revenues are coming in over the fiscal year.
Do you keep this, I guess, just for awareness purposes, just as a point, if they do fluctuate, do you, can we have some of the information as far as, we have 18.6, and if by, you know, July changes to 20, could we have that information just to see how that data, kind of, this data changes, right, during this time?
So, yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor. What we'll do is when we come back, as the city manager mentioned, when we come back in the fall, we will have a new forecast of the utility fund. And then we'll be able to show what that changes. And usually, it does change from what we have budgeted to what we forecast. The new forecast would be presented to council at that time. And that's when we would take a look at how the rates would be adjusted for those percentages moving on out and any expenses and costs that are going on.
But can you list that, I guess, that variation that happens, just for reference?
Sure.
Of what happens during the years?
So two things are going to happen, right? There's the 22, 23 projected is the year we're in. So by the time we get to fall, we'll be further along. And so we'll be able to tell you, give you a better estimate on what we think the year is going to end up. And we'll, obviously, as we go along further, we'll see the costs are being passed on to us from, you know, I just saw SRP is going to be increasing. Their rates, that's going to hit us, you know, and other opportunities, well, the water or the whole CAP, we'll understand better what that's going to look like. So we'll be able to update all that information.
Ms. Duff, did you have a question?
Well, a lot of them have been answered. Just for, the transfer that we do is already reflected in these net sources and uses?
That is correct, Mayor, Councilmember Duff. That is correct. It is in the, the net number that we have for the departments.
Okay. And then for overall city budget, this is the enterprise fund, projecting out to 27, 28 is 6.4%. Where are we overall, considering both sides of the equation, the city budget with enterprise, our overall net position as far as percentage of reserve?
So we don't do, so based on that conversation we had earlier on the financials, we don't spend time doing those kinds of forecasts.
Okay. All right.
We could look at that, but we, I think the good news is, we got a pretty healthy, we're right in, we're right in where we need to be on the general fund. So we kind of say, okay, check that box. And then we come over here and we just, and listen, this is where we're seeing most of the stress, right? The utilities, those are one of the reasons we shoot for that 20%. It, you know, there's so many changes, there's so many variables that really impact this fund. The commodity cost, the chemical cost, labor cost, debt service on building these huge facilities that we need to bring the water in. So this is, you're going to see that the variability happens over here much more than it does on the general fund side.
I know this is kind of a preview for, you know, going forward, talking about utility capital expenses, but, and I love the discussion and the GRIK, you know, reuse water project because it kind of resets the paradigm of where we're at in terms of our access to CAP water and the rate we pay for CAP water, and it addresses the inflation that we're seeing in CAP water. So that's really exciting that we're doing that. I would, I wonder, similarly, the other inflationary item that's out of our control is electric rates. And it seems like in previous years, we've talked about perhaps adding electric generating capacity to our electric portfolio for our electric company with some gas-powered turbines. I wonder if, and I, again, I'm not asking you to answer this now, but I'm looking forward to having that discussion when we talk about?
We could include that.
Yeah.
To state where we're at.
But I just wonder if that might, I mean, the more I hear on a national level, the electric supply with the advent of electric vehicles and increased demand for electricity, I'm not sure. I think we need to readdress, let's, maybe we do need to get, take more seriously the idea of getting into the electric generation business.
So, yes, Mayor, that's a great point. And I believe that may be coming up when we do the utility CIP and some of the utility funds coming up. Energy will be talking about some of those topics.
We're talking about using natural gas power to create electricity, the grid, so, yeah. We'll bring that.
Yeah, I think that's a really exciting idea because of the stress we have on the electric grid right now and the inflation we're seeing in electric rates. Maybe, again, similar to the GRIK project, we can come in and be the solution to our own problem.
Well, and I think if anything else, it helps us diversify the source of our electric generation, right? So that we have, we don't, we won't so reliant on one particular area or source of power. We can create our, an additional source of power.
Thank you. I look forward to hearing more about that.
Okay, so the next slide just kind of shows you a brief budget process calendar. So as for the month of April, department presentations will be coming up to council. And then on May 4th, Thursday, May 4th, OMB will be presenting the budget wrap-up. And then on May 15th would be the adoption of the five-year capital improvement program, but then also the tentative adoption of the annual budget. And then on June 5th, on Monday, June 5th, we'll have a public hearing for the annual budget and secondary property tax, and then the final adoption of the annual budget. And then on June 19th will be the adoption of the secondary property tax. And also I wanted to add that attached, just for information for more detail, attached to the agenda is the council report that goes into much more detail than what we talked about today. So if you want any more detail on the operating budget. Other than that, it's?
So Mayor, we have two items remaining. We have what we call the non-utility CIP programs. We can do that next, go through that quickly. And then we'd go back up to 2A. So I think we've covered everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Since then.
So, Ms. Spillsbury, do you have a question?
No, I just, I'm going to go to the bathroom.
Can we have a break?
Great. All right. Yes, thank you. Let's reconvene at, shall we say, 9:45? Does that give us enough time? 9:50. 9:50. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item 2E, a presentation to discuss non-utility projects included in the capital improvement program. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Brian Richel, I'm the Office of Management Director. And with me today is Billy Shomar. She is the Budget Coordinator over our capital projects area. So starting off with the capital improvement funding sources, there are four major sources that we use to fund our capital projects. One is local revenues, for instance, city sales tax, state shared revenues, and any other revenues generated by city services. Other ones are regional awards and grants, regional, state, or federal. And it allows the city to leverage city funding sources. For instance, the, for instance, the Mesa Moves 2020, we were able to issue bonds, but then also get reimbursed by MAG on those, some of those projects. We also use general obligation bonds and also excise tax bonds. When looking at projects, we also look at the operations and maintenance of the, of that facility or program, things like that. What we look at is the one-time startup purchases and ongoing costs. We review those and include those into the forecast and for the completion of the project to ensure that the city can meet operational requirements. For example, staffing of a new fire station or library, landscape maintenance at project at city parks, but then also one-time costs of furniture, fixtures, equipments, and any vehicles that may be needed for that project. So the next slide is kind of the theme from the previous of the proposed budget is current challenges for the CIP are cost overruns and delays in receiving construction materials, increase in costs of labor, higher-than-normal inflation on commodity services and contracts, and then also keeping up with the growth while maintaining current infrastructure. The next slide just shows you a summary of the capital improvement program, so what was budgeted for 22, 23, kind of the actuals year-to-date of 22, 23, what the proposed budget will be for the city manager's proposed budget for 23, 24, and then what the plan is for that five-year CIP plan. So we're looking at the 23, 24 budget, year-to-date actuals are just year-to-date, but we are looking at finishing some of the projects listed later on. But then some of those will also be rolling over into fiscal year 23, 24 budget.
I'm sorry, Ms. Spillsbury.
If I could ask a question on this slide. So the year-to-date actual means that as of March 30th or whatever, right? March, what is the date? 31st? So is our, are we, do we expect the end of the year to be closer to the budgeted amounts? Because they're way lower. So I'm just curious what?
So it could be, it all depends on how the projects, so some of them are over fiscal years. What we do is we budget the full project cost in the first year. So it may go over into separate fiscal years, will carry that over. So the 47, yes, I would expect it to grow by the end of the fiscal year. Will it beat the budget? It probably won't be because some of those projects will move over into the next fiscal year. So they're multi-year, so, but we do it in the beginning of.
Okay, but we don't, do we have a projected amount or we just don't know that yet?
We probably update that. It's?
That would be three more months, essentially, right? So?
Yeah. We can, we can look at that. The, like I, like Brian's saying, a lot, we, by budgeting standpoint, we have to show that we have all the money when we issue the contract, even though the project may take 18 months or?
Okay.
You know, whatever, more, more or less than that. And so they overlap multiple years, and we just keep carrying the money forward.
Yeah, so that money just goes to the next one?
But we can kind of give an update about, you know, maybe when we get closer to the end of the year, kind of where the status of some of the projects are.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, also what affects us is what we've seen is significant delays in the construction materials of being able to get those and complete the So the next slide I wanted to show, briefly show, is the completed projects that we're looking to complete in 22, 23. Some of the ones I wanted to highlight is on the transportation transit Falcon Field, the Falcon Field Higley Ramp. Also, we're looking at doing some bus stop improvements and shelter construction, Valvista at the Eastern Canal Drainage Improvements, Williams Field and Ellsworth Road should be completed, and then Alma School Pavement Reconstruction. On the Parks and Culture side, we have Marlboro Mesa Park, the new playground, Lehigh Sports Park was finished this year, the Dobson Library, and then also Sloan Park Video Board upgrades. On just the general governmental side, we had some downtown parking and solar improvements that finished this fiscal year. The ASU in the plaza at Mesa City Center was actually finished this fiscal year. And then various other city ones have done for this year. So projects under construction, currently under construction for this fiscal year is the Northeast Public Safety Facility, the Evidence Building is, has started, the city council chambers will be starting, the Mesa Tennis and Pickleball Center, Monterey Park expansion, the Red Mountain Park expansion, the Express Library at Monterey Park has started, The Post, and then also Sossman and Baseline Roads. Those are current projects.
I'm sorry, I can't, is Mesa Tennis and Pickleball, is that Gene Autry or is that?
Yes, Mayor, that is the Gene Autry.
That was part of that when we sold the property at Thomas &amp; Recker.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Replacing, because that was purchased with park bond money and we said?
We allocated some of that.
Actually built a park.
Councilor Luna wanted the pickleball, set the Gene Autry, so that's where that was.
Thank you, I forgot.
I was over there yesterday, actually, in the Gene Autry parking lot. And there is a part under construction, so that's it? The part that's already under construction?
She's nodding her head, yes.
Oh, I'm looking at Beth. Yes, okay, so that's it.
And Andrea, so.
Oh, I can't see under there. Okay. It's exciting. How many courts is it?
Eight.
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 Probably not enough.
It's our risk.
So projects, we're looking to initiate this coming up fiscal year in 23, 24. There's a big list, but some of the ones that we're looking at is the Signal, Signal Butte Park Phase 2, the Fire Station 223 at Lehigh, some of the Falcon Field Monument signs, the Studios Phase 2, the Serine House Phase 1, the Neon Gardens, which was presented earlier this morning. And then some street projects are Broadway Road, Mesa Drive to Stapley, Sossman Road, Ellsworth Widening, but then also some pedestrian hybrid beacon at the Dobson Road Traffic Signal at Mesa Consolidated. So these are the projects that we're looking to initiate this coming up fiscal year.
Ms. Spillsbury.
I cannot remember what we're doing to the Serine House. I remember everything else on this list, but?
We'll bring it to you.
Have we had that proposed already?
No.
No, we owe it to you. We're bringing it to you.
Perfect, then that's why I don't know about it.
Andrea, is that a your presentation? Okay. So when the Parks Department comes forward, we'll have that.
I can't wait. Okay.
Then future, future projects that the city is considering, some of the street, it's a combination of everything, a street, fire, and parks, Valvista Drive, 60, the US 60 to Pueblo, Southern and Country Club intersection, so some work on Greenfield Road, also Baseline Road, Greenfield to Power, which would be in coordination with the Town of Gilbert, Fire Station 224 is a future, a Fire Station 220, or 205, but then also Police Headquarters remodel, public safety training facility improvements, IDEA Museum renovation, and then also a Falcon Field, the Echo Ramp East is some future projects that we are looking to consider. And with that, it kind of moves into some of those projects for the potential 24 general obligation bond. As mentioned, I believe with the strategic planning, we'd be coming forward, working this year, and then starting the next probably calendar year of coming to council on the 24 general obligation bonds. What we're looking at, the categories for that bond initiative is the Parks Recreation and Community Facilities, library, transportation, and arts and culture for those.
So Mayor and Council, once we complete the budget, we'll probably come back, start having a conversation about, talking about the types of projects and what the community about that might fit or be considered in a 2024 package.
So we would probably need to make those decisions by like Mar, like a year from now?
Yes, usually it's around this time next year, we would be coming to you and trying to finalize some of those projects. And the call the election is usually in around June.
Mr. Freeman.
I know we have some bond authorization left over for each one of these, and if so, how much would be left? And, you know, so we consider future bonding programming? Would that be possible? Mr. Reddy?
Oh, yeah. No, when we, that's one of the things we'll do. When we kick it off, we'll have a conversation about the status of the previous outstanding bonds and those projects and where they're at. Many of them are, were identified in the list that Brian gave you. But we'll, yeah, we'll want to do an update and kind of talk about status of what's already been authorized, and then talk about where we go for the future.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks.
Ms. Spillsbury.
So I'm also just trying to kind of figure out how this works. So under the future project slide on slide nine, I'm familiar with some of these because I think they're already in the beginning stages of moving forward. So are we, are these the ones that we're saying would possibly be on bonds?
No, I think all these are, go ahead, Brian.
Oh, yes, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, these are already in the for, the plan.
We've identified funding for these.
Okay, so, so all of these, for the most part, have the funding attached to it already of what the plan is. So the ones for the bonds would be like completely new ideas.
Correct.
Are some of these future projects that are being funded by some of the previous bonds?
Currently, yes. Bonds, we call it authorization. They've been authorized, we haven't issued them to pay for them, but they will be coming, yes.
So Mayor, Councilmember Spilbury, for instance, the Police Headquarters remodel, that was part of this last bond.
Right, yes.
That is, that is part of that.
So.
CDIM Museum on there, which was part of a previous bond.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think I've gotten confused on some of that, okay.
That's why I asked.
And that is the presentation, if there's any other questions?
Thank you, Council, any other questions? I know, I know this was a preview, so there'll be lots of questions when we get into the meeting.
All right.
All right, thank you, let's now circle back to Item 2A. This is a continuation of last week's discussion on funding recommendations for community development block grants, known as CDPG, and home investment partnerships, and emergency solution grants and human service programs. Thank you for working on this, and we look forward to your updated presentation.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, I'm Candace Canistrada, one of the deputy city managers with the city, and with me is Michelle, who was with you last week and had your discussion regarding the Nason. You had asked, council direction was for staff to go back and look for a way to consider Child Crisis in our funding mechanisms, and so today, that's what we have for you, is a council staff recommendation regarding that particular request. So if you look here, what we have looked at, if you recall from last week's discussion, the federal dollars are set in the dollar amount that's available, but the ones category that we have is our human services funding, which is not necessarily set by anybody except the City of Mesa. And so we do have control over that dollar amount that is assigned to that particular category. When we looked at that, we did look back and see that we have not adjusted that dollar amount, that is the general fund transfer into this human services category, if you will. I don't want to call it a transfer, it's still general fund money, but it's allocated to human services as part of the budget adoption. We have not made an adjustment to that in a few years, and so staff recommendation would be that we adjust that dollar amount by $70,000. The current general fund allocation is 700 and, just over 708,000. An adjustment of 70,000 would bring it up to the 778, 473 would be the dollar amount. If we were to make that adjustment to the human services category that was discussed last week, and applied the same rationale, how we go through the scoring, the percentages where they don't get necessarily 100%, but as they do go down through the score, they would get a percentage of what the request was, the additional $70,000 would allow us to do partial funding of two additional, two additional organizations. The next one on the scoring list was Dress for Success Phoenix, which is their Educate Her Mesa Program. That allocation would be $20,000. The reason why it's a little bit higher, and I want to make sure, is that we do have a $20,000 minimum for this human services category. Anything below $20,000 is just cost prohibitive for administering to the organizations, so regardless of the ask. So for Dress for Success, we would either be funding them at $20,000, or we'd have to not fund them, because we wouldn't do anything less than that. The next one on the list was Child Crisis Arizona, they have a program for preventing child abuse and unattentional childhood injury in Mesa. The ask for that was $200,000, the, the allocation would be $50,000, and that would come up to the total of $70,000 increase to this particular area. So if we were to increase the human services funding by increasing the general fund contribution, this is how we would allocate those dollars, for staff recommendation. If you want to see the total, the next two slides just kind of remind everyone who, what is in the human services category. They are in score order, the scores are not listed on the PowerPoint, but you do have those documents from last week. They are in score order, so you can see that the, at the bottom would be the two additional programs, if we were to expand this particular area of, of funding, those would be the next two programs on the list for funding.
Thank you, Candace. Ms. Spilbury.
I don't know where, which direction I want to go with this, but I appreciate the increase in the funding, as the mayor had requested that, and if we haven't done it in a while, it makes sense to maybe add some more funds to that. I have the funding recommendation sheet that shows all the scoring, even all the ones that we didn't fund, and the comments why, and there are three programs that scored higher than the Dress for Success or the Child Crisis, so, and the comments were that there were similar services funded above in this category. You could make the argument that there's also similar services funded for the two that we're proposing to fund, so I'm just curious where, where your reasoning was and why you decided to skip those three if they all scored higher.
I'll address it a little bit, and then I'll let, Michelle is more familiar with, with the applications. So one thing we do want to remember when we're looking at these is, obviously, it's very hard to put a full description of what each project, project is, but when the scoring was done, they are multiple, some of them up to 30-page applications, so a little bit more detail.
Yeah, oh, a lot more.
So one of the things, I'll give you kind of the philosophy, and then maybe Michelle can hit on the actual projects themselves. So one of the philosophies that the staff use when they're looking at these is because we do have limited funds, we want to make sure that we're spreading it to different types of service and also different demographics. So one of the items, one of the projects that's below those three that were skipped, if you will, was senior, was a senior demographic that we did not have in the other programs that were scored higher, so that was a reason to go down and grab something that had that senior demographic. The ones that were passed over were, while they were youth-oriented, they were, there was another program that scored higher, so of those two programs, the higher scored program was funded versus the lower scored program that allowed us to do other items.
So real quick.
One of the other items is also tax preparation, so it's, it's a little bit like, it's demographics and the types of service, so it's not all in after-school, it's not all in mentorship, it's not all in senior.
Right.
It's kind of that flavor.
So with that philosophy, I can see why the Auster Aging Catholic Charities and Mesa United Way were scored before those three. But at this point, if we're adding 70,000, if we're going by fairness and scoring, I feel like we should go back up to the ICAN, the after-school programs, the Dress for Success Phoenix is low-income woman, and I think that Educate Her Mesa Program is also the same that we're saying, proposing funding for. So I'm just, just trying to follow the reasoning here, because if I was looking at this from an outside perspective, I would think that those three programs would justify funding before the Dress for Success and Child Crisis would. And I'll just throw it out there, too, one of the reasons I was advocating for Child Crisis was specifically for the youth of girls foster care, which isn't this program, and not that preventing child abuse isn't absolutely important, it's just that that's not going to help the advocacy I wanted for that program, because again, we can make a solid argument on any of these human services, they're all incredible programs. I also wanted to point out, I found out last night that there was COVID dollars given to Child Crisis, 567,000, I think was the number. Nowhere in any of these conversations over the last several weeks has that been brought to my attention. Maybe as a council member, I should have done my work and gone back and looked a year ago to see what dollars we gave for COVID. I don't know how we're, we are reasoning that the money we gave through COVID doesn't impact this program, because to me, it does. If we gave 567,000 to Child Crisis specifically for a foster, a, a home for foster youth, and that's what I was advocating for last week, but yet no one reminded me that we'd already given them 567,000, we maybe wouldn't have had that whole conversation. So I guess I'm trying to understand why the COVID dollars, because I don't remember, I mean, do you guys all remember which, which services were given what money through COVID? I don't know how we're, we're expected to remember all of that, so I'm a little bit frustrated that I've really dug into this program, I've, I've studied and researched and asked a million questions to you guys, and you've been so good about trying to get me all the answers, but yet that really big core piece of information was completely left out of this conversation.
Well, and I apologize if that, if that would have affected it, but we really, this is a standalone process, right? We didn't look and see how much you got from CARES dollars, or what you're might be getting through ARPA, because this process really is intended, and that's what I, I told the director of Child Crisis, this is a standalone annual process, you cannot rely upon commitments for multiple years, it doesn't work that way. This is a very process scoring, and we don't say, oh, because you got money prior year, you can't compete, or you're going to get scored.
But we have, we've looked at, well, what I was told is that we do look at like previous year's funding and how much they've gotten in years past, and as a council, if, if the council truly is part of this process to decide where the money should go, it's helpful for us to know what money has the city given them, and I, and I get that we're just, we're just giving federal money, it's not our money, but all of that plays into this conversation for me.
Okay, then we'll need to change the process, because we don't do that, we have not done that. I don't know that we carry forward and tell you, oh, three years ago, they got this, we, only we've ever had that competition, because this is intended to be an annual allocation process that stands alone on the priorities the council set back right before we started this process, so we don't look at that and try to keep score for multiple years, and especially in this very extraordinary time of these federal dollars coming in from all these other places. I think what we were trying to address frankly is the accusations that we had made some kind of commitment or promise that carried on for a project that had, after they had gone for, you know, the first one they were awarded, they could not spend the money. They recognized that as they were going through the year, they were not going to be able to spend the money fast enough, and that's a big issue for us, is being able to show the spend rate down.
Right.
And so they, we told them, then you can't, if you can't spend the money, then the money needs to go back to somebody who can, and then they suggested that there was some kind of commitment or promise. There's no one person in this organization, whether it's a staff person, me, or even a council member, could make that kind of commitment, because we're all in this conversation together, and the fact that after that point, they proceeded with a project, the same project, and listen, if they needed to move forward and get things done, they did, but it, because it didn't follow, you know, federal HUD guidelines along the way in doing the environmental, now for us to come back and allocate dollars to that same project is, is concerning to us.
So I, I 100% agree, and that's why I wasn't fighting or advocating for that particular project, because it wouldn't be HUD, it wouldn't meet the HUD regulations for it, and so in nowhere in last week, or this week, or all of my questions have been about that project, I was specifically focused on how can we give them funding for these girls coming out of foster care? And so to then find out last night that we did give them almost $600,000 specifically for that foster care program, I was like, oh, okay, that wasn't ever a part of any of these conversations, and so just as a council member, when I'm looking at these, and I see that one of the reasons we're not going to fund that foster care program is because not all of their funds were expended in '21 and '22, and then I look at the 22, 23 funding and see that Child Crisis Center was funded $0 in 22, 23, so then I'm like, well, it looks like they're, they probably should be in line to get some money, not realizing they just got almost 600,000 from the COVID dollars. So I think it absolutely impacts the decisions that I'm supposed to make as a council member, that's all, that's my point.
I hear you, but I, I don't think in the process of what we set up with the community board and the staff, we take these as standalone proposals.
Well, we've never had COVID before.
No, but we've had other CDPG processes where they've received money, and I don't, if that's how council wants us to look at it, and we don't, you know, we ask council for guidance on strategy, we don't ask about a specific program, right? We don't say, this program is going to be the one that gets the, it's a category.
Yeah, and I guess I'm looking at it like, if I saw a list now in front of me with all of the other money that was divvied out to organizations because of the COVID coronavirus dollars, that maybe would have changed some thoughts for me on, on this process. That's, that's my point.
Okay, thank you, point well taken. I, I do have a question as well, the, going back to this idea of the, the three proposals that were skipped over because they were duplicative of other things that had previously been funded further up, it does, one of those that were skipped over is Dress for Success, and it seems very similar to the one that we are funding now, so I'm wondering why that doesn't continue to get skipped over.
Mayor, the program that was skipped over was for adults, and the one that was below was for youth.
Okay.
And so the one that was above that was for adults, we thought, staff felt that the Workforce Development Center that was just open and that we invested in, it has a similar program to that particular one, but the one that is below the line, if you will, was focused on youth, and that was a direction that we heard last, last week was the youth focus.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate hearing that. I'll, I'll just, I, I number one, want to say thank you, I think it is, it is appropriate for us to go back and say, hey, inflation is a thing, it's been five-plus years since we've adjusted the city contribution of, to the general fund, uh, general fund contribution to human services, so I think it's entirely appropriate for us to update that. I'm delighted that that means that we, you know, the funds trickle down a little further, and there's additional projects that get funded. I also think that this, this list that we've been looking at, the more we delve into it, there's a lot of human service funding that we do that isn't included on here, I'm thinking of the utility assistance and other things. So I, and I, I understand this is an accounting practice, and I don't want us to, to mix, you know, flavors of water or of money on a spreadsheet that shouldn't be there, but I, I do want the city to be fully recognized for the humanitarian work that we're doing, and, and so when we're tallying up how much money is coming out of the, you know, the City of Mesa is dedicating to human services, let's make sure that we're giving ourselves all the credit that we deserve.
Candace, do you have a slide?
I do have, if you want to go all the way.
We have a slide like that, I'm sorry, we should, we didn't.
It's behind the end, we did it as a support slide, just in case you have this question, Mayor.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to.
That's great.
So Mayor, just so that you can see how it kind of breaks down, because it does get kind of confusing when we go to human services, because human services is a combination of both the general fund contribution, which is the 708, but plus also we have our ABC funds that go into that, a better, a better community funds, which are donations from our residents, right, coming in, and that's a combination. So when you look at the, the city side of it, you can see for our committed, we call them, kind of our committed funds, those are things that we as a, have council direction that we want to fund each and every year, regardless of the other human services funding that we have. The first one is Auster Aging, that is paying the utilities on the, the senior center, and so we pay the utilities for that each year, so regardless of how much those utilities are, we cover those. Mesa Promise is $100,000. We are currently, we have to do a HUD reallocation, so we have to dedicate $100,000, that is a repayment plan to HUD for other, for another project that was an at-risk project. Our uncommitted funds then are the 412,000, so if you take that, that's 708, we take out the committed funds, that leaves us 412,000 that nonprofits can compete for during this process. We then add, that gives you your kind of a total, then if we add $70,000 to that, and then you have a better community funds, which is $146,000, right? That's what goes into this particular process, so all of those kind of line items from the different funding sources go into this human services kind of funding category. On top of that, we also entered into a five-year, a three-year contract with two one-year extensions with community bridges for the, our community navigators who work out of our community court. So when we started up our community court, we needed those services. Those are also coming from the general fund, they're not part of this competitive process, but those are general funds that we have toward that same type of services, so that's another $204,000. Go to the next slide?
Yeah.
And that's what comes through here, we also have our Utility Assistance Program that is done through the utility building, through business services, and that, for 22, 23 is 175,000, it was originally 150,000, it was bumped up due to the needs during this time period, so right now it's at 175,000. And then just a reminder, we also have our Senior Limited Income Program, what that one is, is a discount on their water bill, if they meet the criteria of being a senior and low-income, they qualify for that once, and then they don't have to re-qualify for another five years, and so that's a discount on their monthly bill, which is also out of the utility fund.
Great, I appreciate seeing that all together, and so it, my mental math is, I think we're like 1.2, 1.3?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. I think it's important that we tell the whole story, so it doesn't look like we're picking winners and losers, and that we're exclusive in the way that we fund things, because that this is.
And some of those that we've covered later on were added since we established that first number, so we've, instead of adding more to the competitive pot, the council's kind of said, no, we want to add more general fund, but for a specific program, is kind of how we've most recently done it, so.
Great, thank you.
And Mayor, during the upcoming budget process, you're also going to see the K. Ready Program coming through there as well, that we've received direction to make sure that that is funded on an annual basis.
Thank you very much, I know, I think Mr. Ready and Mr. Freeman will. I know, I think Mr. Ready and Mr. Freeman will bet on this.
Just, I can't remember, is it weighted on the scoring? If they have a location in Mesa? Because some of these folks, some of these nonprofits do have programs that they, they're maybe based in Phoenix that they say they, uh, support Mesa residents. So how, I can't remember if there's any in the scoring piece, if they do have a location in Mesa. And if that, I'm asking the Dress for Success Phoenix, do they have a location in Mesa or is it based in Phoenix? And they're saying they're, they're supporting Mesa families.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. So the scoring rubric does not include any kind of additional points if it's Mesa-based nonprofit, as long as the nonprofit, whether it's in Mesa or another city, is serving and can document those serving, those individuals who have been served. And this particular program is located in Phoenix.
In Phoenix, right. But they're saying that it's, they have, they support Mesa families, right?
Correct, correct.
And, and you have that, Mayor and Vice Mayor, you have that on a few of those programs where they might not be located in Mesa, but they do have to document that they're, it's Mesa residents that they're serving for our funding.
Okay. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So way I get all of this, we have $70,000 to allocate, right? And we're deciding on how that allocation is going to be done.
Well, and Mayor and Councilmember Freeman, you have $70,000 if that's council direction to increase the human services funding by 70,000.
This is a follow-up from the direction we had from the mayor, yeah.
Right. And so I'd like to hear the consensus of colleagues here and what they choose to do. There's been some ideas given out, but I'm not totally on board with all of them. It could be swayed.
Can I just, how, how was the calculation of the 70? How did we come up with that?
We took about 10% from the last time.
About a 10% increase. So if you look at the 708, it's roughly, and in round numbers, it's about 10%.
Okay. Because how long had it been since it had been increased?
Well, yeah.
So this particular one, I believe, was 2014. For this one, that doesn't count when we added the committee navigators.
We've added more money, but specifically, not to the competitive pot. Well, we call it human services, but we would allocate money for utility assistance or for Mesa Promise. And we, the council was saying, that'll be the general fund portion, we call it human services. But the part where we do this competitive had not changed.
Okay.
So that's where we came up 10%.
Can I go?
Mr. Spillsbury?
So just looking at these human service funding recommendations, do you know, under youth mentoring, which is that peach color, and I don't know, do you have the color one or anyways? So Funded Already is the Boys and Girls Club of the Valley and the Homeless Youth Connection. And the programs are called Academic Success for Mesa Youth and Empowering Youth for the Future. Do you know if either of those incorporate after-school programs?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, I believe that both of them do. One is leaning more towards a mentoring program, so kind of like having a big brother, big sister kind of situation. But they all have some component of after-school, whether it's homework prep or kind of leadership, they do have components in their programs.
So then maybe that's why the ICANN and Big Brothers, Big Sisters were skipped because of, because those are both after-school programs, I believe. Well, or the mentoring program from, yeah. So just those are similar then, and is, that's why those were skipped?
Correct. So I was just identifying that the, the ICANN falls under that peach category, and so does the Big Brothers, Big Sisters. And so that one is very similar to the Boys and Girls with the youth mentoring.
And then the Dress for Success, you said because of the workforce we're already doing, that that was, maybe they could just use our workforce center or whatever. Okay. So I mean, as I go down, I, again, I, my point in advocating for Child Crisis was not necessarily for this program, and we are giving them $100,000 in another, in the ESG dollars, I believe, is the $100,000. If we're going to talk unique programs, I don't see, I'm concerned, the NAFA program has, has courts, navigators specifically for Native Americans. And I don't think that those are covered specifically for Native Americans who have different challenges than other people anywhere else in here. I mean, you know, so I mean, I, again, I'm just making my point. This, if we're just going point system and we're looking for unique things that aren't already duplicated, we could just keep going down. I, I think we would be dumb to not use the 70,000. If we're, if we're getting offered 70,000, let's use it. But I don't know the best way to figure out who to give that 70,000 to, is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, I guess the direction we were given at the end of the last meeting was to look for money to for Child Crisis.
Right, for Child Crisis.
So that's where we came today, so.
Well, and I think if you, if you preserve the process and we trust the process, the next two in line are Dress for Success and Child Crisis. And I, I would assume, I assume that the criteria were met, it was scored, you know, objectively, and you, you, you can probably, unless you look at the criteria, Julie, you know, have you, there's probably.
I have the scoring rubrics.
Variations in all of these. But I think if, if the process has been followed and those are the next two that scored the highest for those reasons.
Can you tell me what the Educate Her program is? Which it's the Dress for Success, but it's called Educate Her, so I don't really know what that means. You, you've sent the, like, packets, the application type things for all the CDBG, like, public service, you know, those ones, but I don't think you sent all the applications for human services with all the details of the program. So I just don't know what the Educate Her program is.
So it's a, a youth education program specifically for, for younger women.
Like, so not an after-school program, but maybe like teenage girls or like young adult women to get jobs or, do you know what?
It does include a workforce education piece, so I would say that it's probably, you know, younger adult women.
Because then you could make the argument that that also is already covered in a previous program. So then we're down, I, I, yeah, let's just, if we're, if we're going by the fact that we're trying not to duplicate services, then we probably need to keep moving down.
And, and Mayor and Council, I guess it's not so much that you don't want to duplicate it, but if there are duplicate programs and there are other programs that are very close, not funded, but a different demographic or a different service, then that's when that really comes in, it comes into play, right? It's like, if you want, if you need to go five or six down to get a unique program, that would be different than if you just need to go one or two down to get a unique program.
And I think, Michelle, I mean, I get the conversation, but again, I'll go back to the process. There was scoring, staff was involved, the committee was involved in this process, the committee was aware that we're passed over.
Yes.
I just thought of another thing, though. If we've, if before the process you had that 70,000, you might have done different funding amounts for some of those ones higher up, because obviously not everyone was funded at 100%. So that's another way to look at it, that maybe 70,000 is allocated higher up, because a lot of these people didn't even, I mean, no one got, well, a few people got full funding, right? But most didn't get full funding. So after the fact, add 70.
Well, but that was the direction we were given. We were given a direction to go solve the problem for Child Crisis. We came back and we were asked to go look at the increasing the general fund contribution, which I think after going back, we realized, yeah, it's been a while since we've increased this part. And so 10% seems like a reasonable number, and it allowed us to get to the goal that the direction we were given. Now, if we want to start this whole process again, that's, it's the general funds, we can do that. What we really need is direction on the federal funds, but, you know.
Because you don't, there's, so there's not the timing requirement on these ones, correct?
Correct. Mayor and Councilmember Spillsbury, what we really, what we need today is direction from council on all of the federal funding that, that the council is good with the staff recommendations so that we can include it in the public period, the public comment period, which is 30 days. We still have our 30 days. We can still make the May 1st council meeting to actually approve those dollar amounts, but we need the direction that those are the dollar amounts the council is comfortable with so that we can post the public comment.
I'm prepared to, to vote to move the federal recommendations ahead. As I look at this human services list, like Catholic Charities that does the victims of sexual assault and domestic violence was funded 50%. I would love to see them get more funding. The United Way Vida program is their biggest program that they do, and it's amazing, and a lot of people use it. And I would love to see that more funded. You know, like, I'm not feeling super comfortable with moving ahead. Maybe I would like staff to go back and look at that again with the 70,000.
Yeah, I, I think that would be problematic for us, because we don't have the advisory board to go through, we don't have that context. So we could, but it, I think, again, back to the process of, you know, maybe we just not do the 70,000 this year, do it next year. I mean, there's, I'm, I'm really trying to be careful about making those who contributed to this process respecting that effort. And I agree, if there's other priorities now, then we should address that in the next round. If the 70,000 creates more problems, then we'll just roll it over and say, next year we're going to start at 778 or whatever the number is. And then it gets played through just like we're talking about. And, right, all those scenarios could be true, but that was, the direction was to solve for Child Crisis.
I support just moving the 70,000 to next year on another process. That's what I, not to move, but to support.
Support it. Mr. Summers?
What we're talking about right now is moving this forward for public input. I, I think it would be valuable to do that and see what other kind of input we have, because I, I'm uncomfortable with the 70,000 addition, too. I'm also uncomfortable just listening to this discussion about the process. It's, I know it's iterative, and we're continuing to make changes to it and trying to quantify it a little bit more so that we can be as fair as possible. But we're, we still clearly have some work to do on that. My recommendation would be just move this package forward into the public comment period, and then we could all decide what we feel, how we feel about that 70,000 specifically, and we can make motions specific to that when it comes back to council for final approval. But for the time being, it would be worth getting some more public input on it.
Does that need to have a 30-day public comment period, the human services?
Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, no. Only the federal dollars require a 30-day public comment period. And that comment period is mostly for the annual action plan that we developed that has a lot more information than just the funding. It has how we're addressing for housing and a bunch of other information that HUD requires. So basically, that comment period, any comments received during that time are just placed into the plan, and if we need to address them, we respond. But that can also overlap with the funding recommendations being voted on on the 1st of May.
I think that was my question on, can we move, if, if there's a way for the 70,000, let's say, and make a motion that day to, to fund.
So separate 70,000. The federal fund is, we have to follow that process, we need to get that notice out. This won't get adopted until you adopt a general fund. But we always do them as packages, because we want to be able to see how the nonprofits are trying to balance that out. And the reason we set up the general fund is one, not only to get a contribution from the city's general fund, but also it helped those agencies that were not as sophisticated administratively to be able to manage, administer may be the right word, a HUD grant. They're just very difficult. And so the general fund became an opportunity to allow us to bring in the smaller groups. But they run through the same process.
Sure.
Right? And, and they're, that's looked at as a total package. But we will not adopt this, but we don't have it scheduled as a, this is the time when we schedule it. If you want to have another discussion just on the general fund allocation, we can. I would say staff is going to say, this is what our number is. This is our recommendation based on the direction we've been given. The council certainly can make any adjustments after that.
Sure.
But that won't come till the end, that will come closer to whatever, May or timeframe or something like that.
Okay. So let's move something forward. And I'll just begin to put it in context. Last week, when we were on the horns of this dilemma and Child Crisis was sitting here making the compelling argument that, hey, you know, we've been skunked here, it wasn't top of mind that, wait a minute, you're getting 100,000 on ESG, and oh, by the way, you got close to 600,000 last year. So maybe our, my, my, my question, my challenge to staff of saying, is there a way to shake some money loose for them? I might not have asked you to look at that. But having done that, and I, I hesitate to say, oh, yeah, that's, I, I love the idea of giving more, of increasing the size of the pie. It is true that we haven't increased the pie for several years. It is true that inflation is significant. And so I, I support increasing our contribution from the general fund to human services. And if it's problematic to do that at the last minute, after the, you know, the process has gone through and it, and it somehow impunes the integrity of the, of what, all the good work that's gone into it, then, then let's not. But.
But Mayor, I would say that 70,000, we could go to utility assistance, it could go to Mesa Promise. There's a lot of other programs that did, that are kind of like, you know, where we'd say, listen, we still have a need. Maybe instead of offending somebody in the process is completed, we could still, this year, put it somewhere else and then come back next year and add it to the total.
Thank you. So for the sake of perfect, moving this forward, I'm going to, I'm going to urge, I'm going to ask for a motion to go forward with the recommendations as of last week. And then we will look for opportunities to, you know, add some additional fund, human services funding inappropriate. There's, again, no, no shortage of places we could do that. But is there a motion to go forward with the recommendations from last week? Ms. Spillsbury?
I will make a motion, but just one second. So I just want to maybe clarify a point. I also don't want to leave 70,000 on the table this year, I just think that would be stupid. But, so maybe I like the suggestion that maybe there's some other things we could put it towards. The comment that we don't want people to be offended, and it was also made last week, help me understand for a minute. If these are funding recommendations, that's all they are, correct? So why are we acting like all of these organizations are going to be offended if we move money around or if we change? Because isn't that part of the process, that nothing's set in stone, we're not making any promises to anyone, these recommendations don't mean that those are decisions that were made and that they're going to get that money for sure? The process is that it then comes to council, and council makes the decision of whether we want to approve this or move money around and make different changes. So I don't know why we're acting like, do, do the organizations understand these are also just recommendations, and even if they're being recommended to get 50,000, they might not get 50,000? So there would be no offense there? Because that's just the process.
I think the challenge is that they do know there's a process, and they, they did a lot of effort in making sure their applications are correct before they go. And then they have to make a presentation for over two days in front of a board. So that they, it's created, we've created this process and this scoring process. So, yeah, I think there is an expectation. So when it comes to council, as opposed to having you go through two days of presentations and hearings, it's like, is the question is, have we met the stated purpose of trying to meet your overall goals and objectives, and was the process fair and transparent? Now, certainly council has more discretion than that, but that's kind of in the context in which we bring it to council, because otherwise, when nonprofits see that, well, maybe I, there's another path outside of the process to get considered, then everybody will think that's the way to go.
And I guess I, I would like, as a council member who, I'm going to do this at least one more time and possibly five more times. I want to know if the council is for real part of this process, or if we are expected to rubber stamp the staff's recommendations. And I get that there's a struggle there, and that's the balance. But if we're going to say that the council's part of the process, then we need to actually be part of the process and not be told that we're going to offend people if we change it, or that there's a timing issue that, why we can't change it, or, that, that's where I'm struggling with, is that, are we really, truly part of this process? So maybe we need to look into the process more and dig into more of what the process looks like and what council's understanding is of what the process is. But I will make a motion to approve funding going forward for all of the federal dollars. And I suppose, I mean, we just leave humans resources, human services off of?
No, I believe Mayor and Councilmember, you're.
We're going to move human services also forward.
As presented last.
Without the extra 70, but we'll see what else we can do with the 70. Okay, that's my, that is my motion.
Second. Thank you. So I have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Really, thank you, thank you, thank you, for everything you guys do. I mean, it's so appreciated. I'm just, you know, just struggling from my side on what our role is as a council and how this plays into this process, but has nothing against what you guys are doing at staff. So thank you.
Well, I, I love that we struggled with this, because I think that everyone who worked on this process to get it to this point has. on this process to get it to this point has had the similar struggles, right? Because you're, you're, you're saying, all, all of these proposals deserve, you know, I would love to fund, so.
And one last comment, too, I'll say this, and I'll say it again at the beginning of next process. We do not want nonprofits coming through this process thinking this is 100% of what they rely upon to get those projects done. It should not be. It should be an enhancement of additional, but it should, it can't be the totality in relying upon this process to sustain itself for a long period of time. It just, it's not set up to do that.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Item three of our agenda is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Freeman and Ms. Oretia. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, I know you've all been very busy. Who would like to start?
Okay. How long can we make this meeting? I just wanted, last Thursday was the Mesa PD Women's Leadership Symposium, and I was able to attend, and it was just fascinating to find out that as, as recently as the 1970s, when women joined the force, they had to wear three-inch heels, a skirt, and they had to keep their gun in their purse. And so we have come a long way. And right now, 12.3% of our officers are women, are sworn officers. And so we still have a long way to go, but it's, yeah, to the 30%. But anyways, it was a great symposium. And almost all of us were in NLC, National League of Cities over the weekend, and I'm on the Fair Committee, which is Finance Administration and Intergovernmental Relations, and actually really enjoy it and got a lot of good ideas to bring back to the city. And I'm also on the Youth Education Family Council, which is really great, and some good things being done there, too. And, but that's all I'll, I'll talk about.
Thank you. Mr. Summers.
Well, I'll bounce right off that and say that there is a PD recruitment event at the Bass Pro Shops from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. So women and men who would like to be police officers, come to that event. Maybe we can get over 12%.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Oretia?
Just wanted to, outside, we started a Broadway corridor branding process. So thank you for economic development and the stakeholders around the Broadway corridor. Councilwoman Duff, myself, looking forward to, how do we highlight the work in a lot of manufacturing potential that is there on the Broadway corridor, west, I think, from Mesa Drive to Dobson. And so that, that's an exciting process there. Also, this morning, Councilwoman Duff and myself were at a coffee shop with Google Fiber. So they already have customers starting this week on the fiber side. So really need to see that progress in our city, especially in West Mesa, where a lot of the, the undergrounding work has been done. So I think there's over 500 miles of permits going on or going to go on in the next couple of months already on the fiber side. So that's exciting to have our residents' options with, on the fiber side for their internet service providing, provider. So I don't think that's it.
That's exciting. Anxious for them to come to my neighborhood. Ms. Duff, and then Ms. Go forth.
Yeah. As Julie had mentioned, that all of us, except for Vice Mayor Oretia, were at the National League of Cities Congressional Conference in Washington, DC. Well, someone's got to stay in and, you know, keep the doors open, you know? No, 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 I didn't mean that. It's derogatory.
I'm just kidding.
We can't all make every conference. We all can't make every event, we know that. I serve on the Large Cities Council. We talked about the importance of downtowns, EENR, Energy, Environment, and Natural Resources. Talked about the many, many grants available, federal grants available to cities. I'm on the Women in Municipal Government Board, and talked about the importance of women serving in government. We also had an opportunity to sit down with our representatives and senators for the state of Arizona at the Capitol. So that was really important to advocate for what we need to do in Mesa and needing that support. And last night, the mayor and Councilmember Spilsbury and I, and another staff member, we were reviewing presentations by the Mayor's Youth Council on ways to, for the next Mesa and ideas that they have. I'm always impressed with our youth and the ideas they have, and it's always good takeaways. Going forward, this Friday is Caesar or Caesars Shavas Day, and there's a service project at the Mesa Urban Garden on Friday morning from like, I think it's 8:00 to 3:00. And Saturday in downtown Mesa at the Convention Center, Cyclo Mesa, all about biking from 11:00 to 2:00. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Go forth.
Yes, several of us attended Boeing Celebration yesterday. They are, they just received a new contract. They'll be producing 184 Apache helicopters for the US military and some partner nations, including the first Apaches for Australia. So that was exciting and great to hear. Their success is our success. So that was a great event. And then there is a volunteer income tax assistance program at the Red Mountain Branch Library this Friday, March 31st, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, offering free tax help to generally, if you make $60,000 or less, persons with disabilities, the elderly and limited English-speaking taxpayers who need assistance. So if anybody's out there that needs that, please attend that event at Red Mountain Library.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Well, we've all been busy this past week, and I've enjoyed going to the NLC. I'm on the Public Safety Crime Prevention Committee, and there's a lot of information discussed about mental illness retention and recruitment for public safety personnel. So that was one of the drivers. District One hosted yesterday at Andy's Frozen Custard with Mr. Robbins and Heather, oh, I forget her last name, but it was about the general plan update, transportation, and electric vehicle charging stations where they might be placed within our city. So I appreciate that. We had about 40, 50 surveys turned in, and a lot of them were with teenage drivers. So as teenage drivers participate, I like to get their feedback, so they got a free custard out of it. Last, I just want to think about, you know, city management, Mr. Brady, about the resurrection of the post. You know, several of us grew up going there, and our, that was our post office in Mesa for, for decades, and as well as the Tono National Forest Headquarters for their forest and BLM were there. So we've, several of us have been there for quite a few times, so I appreciate that. And the neon signage, you know, kudos to Mr. Peters and Mr. Linoff. I mean, they've put years of dedicated service into salvaging the, the signage. So thank you for their vision and preservation of those signs. And I'm excited about the garden. When it's completed, the Neon Garden, I think it'd be good. The other component I just want to mention, what if it's geocached? Geocaching is very big. In fact, I have one at my farm, and people show up and I go, what are you doing here? Oh, there's a geocache here. Okay. So they come, and it's a very popular item. So geocaching might be considered as part of the amenities for the Neon Garden. With that, thank you.
Very cool. Cool idea. Thank you for letting me be, take a break from this meeting to go to the Arizona Brain Food 1,000th Bag Event. That's, that's amazing that we have, you know, wonderful nonprofits in our city that are partnering with the schools and with the other providers to address the needs of our community. So I wish you all could have been there, but the scheduling was too bad. Yeah, you would have, you really, really would have enjoyed it. I talked about this, this event today when I was at the White House last Thursday. I, I have this wonderful assignment to serve as the Chair of the Mayor's Alliance on Childhood Hunger. And so I was able to talk about the, this event that we just had at Brain Food at the White House on a national stage, and, and everyone was very impressed with, with the, the resources and the organization that we have in Mesa. Also, when I was in DC with, with you guys, I was, I appreciated the opportunity to speak in the General Assembly and to talk about our mental health program. And I think you guys will back me up. When I, when I told the story that Mesa has diverted 3,500 911 calls, you know, away from sworn response to a mental health response, the entire congregation there applauded.
He got the biggest cheer out of any panelists. It was, it was really an exciting moment for Mesa.
So I, the reason I say that is because when you go to those meetings, really every city in the country is talking about that topic and about the importance of giving a mental health response to a mental health call. And so I was so proud that I could not just be in the chorus of saying, yeah, we should be doing that, but I should say, I could say, we, here's what we did in actual numbers last year. So kudos to, to Mr. Brady and to our, everyone in public safety that has made that not just a talking point, but something that we're actually doing. The following day, I think you'll back me up as well, the First Lady addressed everyone, and she talked about how excited she was to come and visit Mesa Community College and to support the Mesa College Promise Program. So I think Mesa had a good day last, or a good week last week in Washington, DC. So thank you for, to everyone who participated in that.
You had Benedictine, too.
Oh, yes. Did we not talk about Benedictine?
We have not. Only you and I were there.
Oh, okay. Well, last night, we, we joined with the faculty and staff, was it Tuesday night? I'm sorry, to celebrate the 10-year anniversary of Benedictine University in downtown Mesa. It was 10 years ago that the previous council, Mr. Summers was a part of it, initiated a higher education initiative to attract, acknowledging the need that we have in our city to, to be better at higher education attainment. So, and the great legacy that continues to be a blessing in our city is Benedictine University. And I think our efforts at the College Promise and ASU and all of these things are a continuation of that initiative to, to bring more higher education to Mesa. So Benio's been a great success. It's a wonderful university. It's wonderful to have a faith-based, faith-based Catholic university as part of the equation in, in Mesa and, and contributing in so many wonderful ways to our downtown. So congratulations to them on 10 great years. Did I do that service while I'm on? All right, Council, anything else we had to discuss before we adjourn this meeting?
It's time for lunch.
It's time for lunch now. Mr. Brady, what, speaking of our next meetings, what does, what does the schedule look like?
Well, now we're getting you conditioned for these long meetings. The next meeting of the Council will be Monday, April 3rd, and we will be starting at 4:30. So we have a couple of budget presentations and an executive session. So check your folders for that information, too. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Ms. Spilsbury. Thank you, Mr. Summers, for that. Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you. We are adjourned.